Whatever you're ready.
Good morning. In compliance with the requirements of Ohio's open meeting law, under COVID-19 emergency declaration, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All or any commission under the purview of the city planning department conducts its meetings according to Robert rules of order. The meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to conflict adventures should be stated for the record prior to taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting have the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activate it by clicking the hand icon. Facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the web X screen. All meeting activity is being recorded via the Web X platform. Also being livestream via YouTube for public view. We have provided a meeting for those who wish to speak on a particular case via our website and email. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Madam Chairwoman, the meeting is yours.
Um, let's call the roll, please, Michael.
Bowen. Downing.
Present.
Fluker.
Present.
Curry.
Present.
Paul.
Present.
Present.
Um, here we have a core.
Okay, thank you. Uh, before we jump in, um, I just thought I would start since this is our last meeting of the year, um, really uh thanking uh city planning staff. Um, Freddie, you and your team for all the hard work. Maurice, this was a really amazing switch to um go virtual. And you guys have done an exceptional job this year. And so I'm actually going to see if any of other my commission members want to say anything before the holidays. But just really want to thank you uh for all the above and beyond and getting us online. And and so it's been a tough year, but you guys have done an amazing job. And I just wanted to say that before we get started. So any other my commission members want to say?
I concur.
So do I.
Good, good.
And thank you for the love. We appreciate that.
It is appreciated because um we wanted to to keep doing the business of the city and you got us online and and got this going. And uh so I think I'm very happy for that. Um, so the first item is a zoning map amendment. Um, it's it's an unnumbered ordinance, uh changing the use height and area district of parcels along the 117th Street uh south of Lorraine. Uh Shannon, are you here to speak to this? And I have a question, is this going to be a um public hearing? So will we take comment on this one?
Yes, this is Shannon.
Okay, so Shannon will present first and then we're going to take um comments from those in the who might be online who want to speak to this uh issue second. And then we'll take the commission's vote. Um, for Freddie, for you guys, I don't have the normal script, but I think I know it by heart now, so I'll try to get it right for going forward. Uh, all right, Shannon, go ahead.
All right, so this map change and the next map change are related. Um, the purpose of this rezoning is this area really used to be a general retail since nineteen twenty-nine and most of it was changed in two thousand six. And so the purpose of this rezoning is really just to align some of the existing and future land uses with citywide twenty twenty plan as well as the other neighborhood plans. And to ensure future development is consistent with the residential retail nature of West one hundred and seventeenth street. Next slide, please. Um, so as you can see here, the current zoning is a mix of two family, multifamily, local retail and resident office. We're really just talking more here along about the um residential office converting that into local retail D one. And some of our legacy uh general retail uses converting those back to general retail so that improvements can be made in the future. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide.
I have the picture of the map up, is that what you wanted?
No, the next slide, please.
That one?
Yep, thank you. So I'm just going to walk you through this, the red areas on the map that you just saw. Um, we are proposing to convert those from local retail to general retail C one. And that's really that legacy um land uses that we were already speaking of. So at this location right here, you will note that it used to be the West Park Auto um Park. And they used to do servicing and uh accessory car sales. Uh, the proposed new use here is um used car sales. They've already done uh some updating. We really just want to bring, it's more of a legal issue just to bring them in line uh with the um current use that's been grandfathered in. Uh, next slide, please. This other section here also is a gas station that's been in the neighborhood since as early as most people can remember. And really, we're just changing this to general retail C one so that when they go to make updates and improvements to their gas station, they'd be able to do so. Next slide, please. And then the rest here, south of what uh Lorraine, uh we're proposing fidelity to governors at place is really just to change that to local retail. Uh, D one currently, it's residence office and it's changed to residence office in two thousand six. And this is really just to match the current land use as as well as allowing current businesses to continue. But also provide neighborhood retail buffer to the residential uses on the side street. Um, along this area, you'll have a mix of residential. Um, as you can see, we skipped over the two family section on the west side of the street. That's really because those are single family and two family homes. Those are deep lots, so we did not recommend uh increasing the area of those lots as you normally see for our smaller lots throughout the city. On the east side of the street, again, it's a mix of um medical offices, neighborhood retail and residential. Next slide, please. And then south the governor down to close to Highland Park, um Holland Park, Halloran Park, excuse me. We're also proposing to change it to local retail D one. And again, that's just to match with the current land use as well as offer some neighborhood retail in this area rather than a residential office that it was rezoned to in two thousand six. Next slide, please. And then this is the last section that we're proposing to change to local retail D one. And again, it's a mix of small supermarkets or neighborhood markets, um offices and some local retail business, small retail clothing shops and such. Uh, next slide, please. And then the final uh section of this map change is adding a zero foot specific map setback. So north of the purple that you see in the left-hand picture, that is uh the Lorraine Avenue. Uh, that's a historic landmark district and those properties there um come to the uh property line. And so really, we're just, right now, there's a five foot and ten foot specific map setback. We're proposing removing those and changing it to a zero foot specific map setback, really so that we can maintain the character and the walkability of this section that uh comes in from Lorraine south to West one hundred and seventeen street. Um, as you can see in the picture on the right, those properties are already at the zero foot setback. So any type of infill development maybe in those parking lots would also fit that same character of the street. Next slide, please. And so that's really the gist of this rezoning is changing uh most of the residential office to local retail. Adding general retail back to those legacy general retail uses so that any type of improvements going forward could be made. Um, this was proposed by the councilman um and supported by the CDC and the neighborhood planner, Mr. Davenport. Um, and that I asked for your vote in making this change just to bring us up to date. Um, any questions?
Um, I think we'll take some comment first, Shannon, and maybe then we'll get some questions from the commission. So um, this is a public hearing. Um, and so we're going to take any testimony or comment from the public. I ask that you keep your comments to two minutes or less. Uh, please state your name clearly and your address, or uh if you're a nearby property owner, where you're located. Um, and first we'll take a comment for those who are in favor, the proponents, anyone in favor of this zoning change.
We have no hands raised.
Okay, um, anybody opposed to this zoning change?
Again, no hands raised.
Done a good job out there, City Planning Commission. Uh, everybody's well informed. Um, okay, so um I'll close the public portion and see if there's any additional comments um from the commission members on this matter or questions.
I move approval.
Second.
The motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I think, sorry, I, Michael has to take, take that action.
I'll take the ball so that it's very clear who is voting. Uh, Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Uh, and the second item is related that Shannon's going to do. It's going to be an unnumbered ordinance establishing a design review district along one seventeenth in relationship to this from Lorraine to Highland Avenue.
Yep, Shannon Leonard City Planning. So this is the same area that we just discussed in the previous map change. And we're just proposing to add a design review district. In the last map change, you'll notice that we left out Halloran Park from the rezoning. That's because there is a city-owned fire station on that property. And we had originally thought that we were going to change it to open space recreation to match the park. However, um, fire stations are first permitted in one family residential. Um, and so we're proposing here to add a design review district. As you know, design review districts are really to protect the property values and enhance the character and visual image of the streets in our neighborhoods. Um, promotes dense walkable mixed use, it guides development through the city processes, it promotes sustainability and equity. Uh, it's designed to improve the walkable characteristics of all building types, residential to industrial. Um, it's intended for our corridors like Western and Seventeenth. And it's for all proposals for new construction, exterior alterations, building demolitions and signs in our commercial uh zoned areas. Um, again, this is just a review. This would be in the uh, we are adding the Halloran Design Review District, named after the park on this street, to the Far West Design Review Committee. Next slide, please. And this is really just to establish the design review district. This is to ensure that our new development and exterior alterations will complement and enhance the character of the surrounding neighborhood and the existing businesses. Next slide, please. Again, this is the area, just as you had seen in the last map, all we're doing is adding the Halloran Park here. That's, there's supposed to be some improvements going forward and the councilmen would like that to be, go through the design review process. Again, these are some of the same pictures from the previous slides. Um, I didn't really think it was necessary to go back and add every picture uh along this corridor, um as you all probably have a good understanding. Next slide, please. So again, this is the area that we're just proposing the Halloran Design Review District. Again, this was a request by the councilman and the neighborhood planner, Mr. Davenport. Thank you.
Um, okay, so um, uh, once again, I think uh this is part of the um. Would this require also public comment as well?
It it is a map change, so it could, yes.
Good, okay. So we'll also take public testimony. Um, and we will start with those who are in favor of the zoning change. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
We have nobody with hands raised?
Are there any uh that opposed to this uh design review district that would like to speak against it? We don't have any, so we'll close the public portion and ask uh for the commission members for any comment.
I move approval, Downing.
Second, Paul.
Uh, we have a motion in a second, Michael, I'm going to call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Shannon, this is great. I think this is great work uh in an area that uh needs to um to have this kind of um attention. So uh, the next item is a conditional use permit in a pedestrian overlay district for permanent parcel number zero zero six dash two three dash zero five six dash zero nine six dash zero nine five and dash zero nine four. This is five one one zero Clark Avenue.
Shannon Leonard City Planning, um, thank you, um, Chairwoman, for your comments. Um, so the proposal here is really just to upgrade the site and expand the retail component of the existing gas station that's been here for several years. Um, next slide, please. Um, so these are the parcels that we are talking about and reference. This is an existing gas station. As you know, uh, gas stations are generally prohibited in a pedestrian retail overlay. But because this is an existing gas station that's been grandfathered in and it's expanding, uh, the Department of Building and Housing asks that they go through the pedestrian retail overlay uh process of city planning. Next slide, please. So really, they just need the conditional uses here for the off-street parking that's within forty feet of the pedestrian retail frontage as well as the driveway over the public sidewalk. And existing pictures, you'll notice they have multiple curb cuts. They've narrowed it down to only one curb cut on Clark. Um, and then that parking in the front is really just for, so they may park their vehicles there. Again, the conditional uses as based on is the size, shape or layout of the subject property doesn't permit placement of the parking or loading or driveway in a better location. And it has been demonstrated by the applicant that the placement of such would could cause uh vacancy or prolonged vacancy at this location. As you can see, they are making improvements and they've removed one of the curb cuts from Clark Avenue. And I believe this was due in process, they need to leave one open. They went through the design review process with Mr. Moss. Um, and so he could give you more information about that. Next slide, please. And then the second one is the building that does not have a public pedestrian entrance from the pedestrian retail frontage. Again, this is an existing building that they're just expanding upon. And so essentially, it is the proposed use occupy an existing building that lacks such pedestrian entrance is made infeasible by the configuration of interior space or other factors or placement of the pedestrian entrance in a location other than the pedestrian retail frontage would have better um suitable pedestrian access. Again, this is an auto centrifuge that has an existing um, an existing building that they're just expanding upon. And so I believe they're just going to leave the entrance in the same place. Next slide, please. So again, they need conditional uses for off-street parking or loading areas, driveways across a public sidewalk and um a building that does not have a pedestrian entrance from the pedestrian retail frontage. Any questions?
Um, commission members? I do not believe we need to take public comment for conditional use, so, um, correct?
These do allow for public comment generally. Um, I don't know if Matt would like, the planner would like to um add anything or the councilman maybe if he is here today. Um, but so we generally do take the public comment for these.
Okay. Um, is there anyone who would like to speak to this matter? Okay, uh, commission members?
Um, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
I don't know how to raise my hand on this function, I apologize. I'm on like four of these platforms. Uh, good morning, everyone. What's that?
Oh, I was going to say, we can't see you, but we hear you, go ahead.
Good, good. Um. I I appreciate your uh, your your time this morning. I've got a couple cases on and Shannon, as always, thank you for your work um on these projects. Um, uh, my commission members, um, again, I appreciate the city working with applicant here. This is the very uh western, um, well, part of the western corner of my ward. Um, yes, I do go to fifty-second and Clark as well as East Fortieth and Lakeside. Um, and so uh I support this um, uh, this uh used, conditional use request. Again, uh, there are significant improvements, I believe, being made to the building as well as the flow of the property uh as it relates to to Clark. Um, so I I support uh this project as I believe uh, in addition to the investments in public infrastructure being made on Clark, uh, this will also be an improvement. Thank you uh to the commission.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Good to have you. Commission members?
I move approval, Downing.
Second, Paul.
Uh, two seconds, uh, Michael, you want to take the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Motion carries. Um, the next item is also a conditional use for permanent parcel number zero zero seven dash zero five dash zero zero nine. Uh, it's, the address is three seven zero one Lorraine Avenue. Shannon?
Yep, Shannon Leonard City Planning. Um, so the proposal here is really just an adaptive reuse of a former video store to a walk-in retail family dentistry office. Um, this is a Metro Health project. Uh, next slide, please. So the location here, you will notice is on the corner of Lorraine. And uh, the properties there on the bottom is in red. Next slide, please. So the first conditional use that they need is off-street parking. Again, they're proposing parking within the first forty feet of the pedestrian retail frontage. However, they do not need the driveway over the sidewalk, making the improvement of closing that driveway over Lorraine. And so they need the parking there for their um, their dentist, this family dentistry office. So the conditions, one or most, both must apply, the size, shape or layout of the subject property does not permit the placement of parking in a more suitable location. Or it has been demonstrated by the applicant that the placement of parking in a loud location would jeopardize the continued occupancy of the property. Next slide, please. And so these are the existing conditions, just to give you an idea. Again, they're closing that curb cut, adding fencing and landscaping, but they do need to put the parking within the first forty feet. Next slide, please. Uh, the second conditional use is a building that does not have a public pedestrian entrance from the pedestrian retail frontage. Um, the proposal here is to place it um facing the parking lot, but quite close to the sidewalk on Lorraine. Um, the issue here is an architectural issue, something within the inside of the building. There's a grade difference between Lorraine and the building itself. And because this is an adaptive reuse, the applicant is proposing the entrance of this location. Again, the conditions for you to approve these conditional uses that the proposed use will occupy an existing building that lacks such pedestrian entrance or that a conforming entrance is made infeasible by configuration of an interior space or placement of the pedestrian entrance in a location other than the pedestrian retail frontage will result in a more suitable pedestrian access. Next slide, please. And again, oh, can you go back one, Maurice? And again, this is just giving you some more pictures of this location and where they placed the entrance in as well as what the building is currently how it currently looks and what they plan to do. Uh, next slide, please. And so basically, they just need the off-street parking conditional use because they are within the first forty feet. And they also don't have a specific pedestrian entrance right there on Lorraine. Um, I believe that there is a representative here from Prospectus Architecture as well as this went to Mr. Moss's Design Review District. Um, and there may be a few other people that are with this project that would like to speak on this conditional use.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Um, first we'll take uh any comments or questions from those in favor of the the matter. So any uh people who would like to speak for this project?
We have Mr. Brunches from Landmarks Commission.
Good morning, Paul Brunches, Landmarks staff. The Landmarks Commission approved this project for Metro Health Family Dentistry on November twelfth, twenty twenty. The applicants have worked with Ohio City and City Planning to adjust the pedestrian retail overlay and they have made changes to meet the spirit of the PRO. The commission supports the conditional uses. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Carl. Um, anyone else? Are the councilmen still here?
We have the, yeah, we have Councilman McCormick and we have Donna Gregonis from Ohio City.
Think I did the raise my hand, did I do the raise my hand?
You did, you got it.
You know, even an old dog can learn new tricks, thank you. Um, so, thank you, uh, Madam Chair and to the commission for hearing this this morning. Um, as many of you are going to be familiar with this site, this is, site has had quite the history in the neighborhood. Uh, this was first a proposal for permanent supportive housing followed by a McDonald's um proposal in which we had years of litigation and protests around. Um, so this site has has gone through quite the wringer. Um, and uh, the community is very, very excited um that at last a uh use like Metro Health that will provide uh an accessible amenity to folks of all different income levels will be taking over this space. Um, you know, we we just cut the ribbon a few months back, Madam Chair, on a brand new health center a few blocks down. And this really uh enhances uh access to dental care for the community. What's exciting about this is it's not only uh on a prominent uh transit line going um east-west uh but it is also uh right on uh on on Lorraine Avenue, but it's also right on Fulton Road as well. So it connects uh to the south and to the north uh for folks who are coming either from the Ohio City neighborhood as well as the Clark Fulton neighborhood. And then again, east-west, of course, as well. So this is a great location for an amenity like this. Um, we, and again, we are thankful that Metro is investing in the community uh for this important service. Um, specific to the the design, uh, Madam Chair, the um, couple things. Number one, I'm very appreciative. Um, and again, thank you to the planning staff for working with Metro on this. I'm appreciative that they are moving the curb cut. Um, that aligns with the Lorraine Avenue Streetscape master plan. Um, and I'm also appreciative, um, Madam Chair, that they are moving the fence on Lorraine Avenue, I believe, six feet back to allow for um additional landscaping and I believe some seating areas as well. I think that will enhance the pedestrian experience on Lorraine Avenue um and as well as the improvements to the building. The one thing the neighbors did request, and I spoke to this at Landmarks Commission, is there are mature trees on the west thirty-eighth street side of the building. Um, so I'm going to repeat in this forum, um, requesting the applicant ma- retain those mature trees on the street. I don't know, I don't believe they have any plans for taking them down. Um, they're not the trees shown in the picture below, they're actually around the corner on thirty-eighth. Um, but they're pine trees and the neighborhood likes them a lot. So again, Madam Chair, I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Uh, this is a very exciting project, a rehabilitation of a building that has been sitting for years, uh, kind of boiled in controversy. Uh, and a dental clinic is is not as controversial as a drive-through fast food place. So uh, we are very excited about this investment from the Metro Health system in our neighborhood. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, uh, anyone else from the uh, uh, CDC want to speak?
We had, we had Donna Gregonis had her hand raised and um Commissioner Fluker has his hand raised as well. I believe Matt Moss also.
Okay. Who would like to go first, Donna or Matt?
Matt, do you want to go first?
No, you can go down, I'll go after you.
Good morning, uh, members of the commission, thank you for having me. Donna Gregonis, uh, Director of Neighborhood Development for Ohio City Incorporated and Tremont West Development Corporations. Um, I did want to state that as an organization, uh, we are really excited about Metro Health coming to the neighborhood. And they have removed the curb cut, which was a huge improvement to the site. Um, but we are a little bit concerned about the PRO still. Um, but we in City Planning have been working with Metro Health and their design team to show that they are trying to do creative solutions to adhere to the spirit of the PRO. Um, and some of those things that we had spoken with them about are contributing to maybe making a nicer bus transit stop or continue uh providing additional bike racks or seating for the general area there, making the corner feel a little bit more welcoming. Um, it is important to note that in a couple of years, the Lorraine Avenue Streetscape plan will be there and there will be many more people working and um being in that area and make sure that they comply because um this will be um an important corner for that uh Lorraine Avenue Streetscape in a couple of years. And our preference was to have a door on the front of the Lorraine, um, on on the Lorraine frontage side of the building. Um, they did move it closer to this, to the street um because of that request. Um, so we do appreciate that and they have made some efforts, but again, we just want to make sure that they do adhere to some of the creative solutions that we were suggesting in this PRO district. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna. Uh, Matt?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm trying to bring up some slides that I prepared, they weren't included in the presentation. Um, so I'm not sure if I'll be able to share them. Uh, but I I had prepared some material to discuss the.
Try it, try it now, Matt.
Let's see. Yeah, it's only letting me share file or a new whiteboard.
Oh, wait a minute. About now.
No, it only shows the file or new whiteboard.
Um, I just lost.
All right, well, maybe just to keep things moving, tell us what you, um, what your points are.
So when we first had this case come through, um, as Shannon- So when we first had this case come through, um, as Shannon and Carl spoke to, it was touched upon by a variety of reviewers. The Landmarks Commission, City Planning, as well as the Development Corporation. And uh, the, the issue with uh, the two PRO issues that we identified, the entrance and the parking in the first forty feet. Uh, the, the applicant demonstrated evidence that the entrance cannot be located on Lorraine because of the existing layout and floor height of the building. And, and that was deemed, uh, that evidence seemed sufficient, uh, to, to staff in order to support that conditional use. However, there, uh, I still have some concerns about the uh, compliance with the, the, the PRO intent of the PRO and the, in the language of the code in terms of prohibiting parking within the first forty feet. Uh, we've made uh, over the last few years in partnership with Ohio City Inc., as businesses develop and change or, or expand along Lorraine to make efforts to, to make sure that, that improvements that they make to their property or changes of use are, are supporting the intent of the PRO. And so that includes closing curb cuts like this project is, is presenting, but also enhancing that street uh, presence. The reason why we prohibit parking within the first forty feet of the PRO, of, of the PRO frontage is to make sure that that frontage is supporting walkability and pedestrian-oriented retail. And so when we have uh, parking lots on, not only on corners, but within that, that forty feet, our, our goal is to try to eliminate them if possible. Or at the very least enhance that presence to create more frontage for pedestrians and transit waiting environments and other road users who aren't car drivers. And so we spoke to this team to see if the way we could in, expand uh, the, not necessarily the sidewalk here, though that would be wonderful. But to expand that environment in terms of adding more landscaping, potentially adding more pavement to enhance the transit waiting environment. Um, and, and, and just enhance the PRO uh, frontage on Lorraine like we've done with other businesses and other properties along the corridor. Perhaps the most successful one, which I wanted to present an image of today, would be the uh, the Forest City Shuffleboard. That was a building renovation that had a parking lot on Lorraine right next door. Uh, they removed that parking. We located parking elsewhere, uh, actually on a land bank parcel. And, and that allowed them to not only expand their building frontage, but provide pedestrian space. There is some shuffleboard courts now on the street instead of a parking lot. And you know, we recognize that we don't have that same situation here. Uh, but because parking is prohibited in the first forty feet, uh, we recommended that uh, ten to twenty feet of the, the parking lot be converted into further landscaping and pavement in order to enhance the transit, not only the transit waiting environment, but the pedestrian experience walking down that sidewalk. Uh, from, from my analysis of the site plan, it looks like that would eliminate up to three parking spaces, uh, which seems like a suitable compromise. Given, again, the, the, the location of all the transit and the forthcoming bike facilities we plan on installing through the, the Lorraine uh, reconstruction uh, and the installation hopefully of a, of a fully separated cycle track. That's something we're still working on with our engineers and our capital projects office, but this is where we are going. Uh, in terms of the quarter, these are the future conditions that we are planning to create. And it doesn't, we don't always have the luxury of having the ability to have every project realize that, you know, be realized in that future world. But we have to take steps with each request in order to build towards that, that future enhanced environment. That, that again, is shifting, trying to shift the balance more towards walking and transit and away from, from being so focused on, on the, the personal automobile. And so, uh, I would recommend um, approving this request with the condition that that space be enhanced. And I can share um, with the applicant or with the commission after uh, that enhanced space that we were thinking. Uh, and again, recommending a compromise in that forty feet between five and ten, ideally ten, to make sure that there's enough space for the necessary amenities we need in the streetscape to encourage people to get around on their feet or on a bike or in a wheelchair.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Um, uh, m- maybe August, before you go, I'll just see if there's anybody opposed. Um, uh, is there anyone who'd like, who's opposed to speaking against uh, this matter?
Um, I, I, this is Greg Zuka with
Okay, I'm just speaking for it, I assume. Go ahead, go ahead, Greg.
Uh, he's, I think he's having some connection issues.
Okay, yeah, I see.
He's on my screen.
Okay. Well, I'm going to assume Metro Health is in support of it. We lost him. So um, anyone opposed who would like to speak? And I don't think so. So then I'm going to kick it to the commission members in August here first.
I, I, I appreciate Matt's um, explanation of why the door can't be on, on facing the public right-of-way. Um, and I, I agree with Matt's assessment of, of creating a more inviting, engaging environment. I think I would further that by saying, since the door cannot be located on, on Lorraine. I would, I think on that corner, there could be something more intentional than just typical onings and changing the color. I think something could reach out and, and welcome people in, whether it's attached to the building or it's, it's a different fenestration on, on pavement or a combination thereof. I think um, I don't think that's an unreasonable request. I think it would be some, really interesting that, that they could do something a little more than sort of the vanilla box, sort of big box solutions that we see every, everywhere around the country. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, August.
Madam Chair, we have Councilman Slyth and Shannon Leonard.
Okay, Councilman.
You're muted, sir.
That was my Carrie McCormick impression. Um, I, I, I guess I want to be clear based off of uh, Matt's recommendation. And maybe this is a little tough right now because Metro's having connectivity issues. Uh, are they agreeable to that recommendation or um, or not?
Maybe, maybe he could type in the chat. Greg, are you um, the question from the Councilman is, is Metro Health open to exploring additional enhancements um, along the street edge um, between five and ten feet? Uh, ten feet might be excessive just because you might lose a lot of parking, but at least some additional enhancements there.
And yeah, he's
Says he's not able to hear. You might want to, uh, Greg, you might want to try calling in. I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman.
Well, I was just going to say, Madam Chair, you, you kind of got to my point. And, and I think when it comes to a lot of these projects in some parts of town, it seems like, you know, we don't, people don't want on-street parking, but they don't want off-street parking. And you know, we have buildings that we've inherited and I'm not always sure how they're grandfathered in. And, and I guess I, I I, I, I worry about setting precedence for being unfriendly towards development. And we have this vacant building for so long and, and I don't want, I, I, I don't want this project to fail, you know, because uh, they're not able to serve their customer base. So it's important to me to understand Metro's perspective on all of that.
Uh, and Madam Chair, uh, to Councilman Slyth, we have Amy who is also with um, Metro Health. Maybe she could answer, answer the Councilman's questions? With her hands raised?
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're actually with Prospectus Architecture uh, for Metro Health. And um, I'll, I'll try and, I'll try and say what I think Greg was going to say. But you know, the, the plan for this dental clinic has fifteen operatories with as many um, with as many staff. Parking's critical to making this work. And one of the reasons I think Greg was going to tell you that it's critical is that um, if we don't have that parking, which uh, is sorely needed and part of zoning, um, you're going to get, you're going to get staff and, and visitors parking off-site. Um, which, which is a challenge and, and not necessarily a positive. Um, so I, I think this amount of parking supporting the program is critical to making this work.
Mr. Chair, Madam Chair to the applicant. Who's the, who's the constituents? What's the demographic?
Who's the constituents? What's the demographic?
Uh, Madam Chair, I can also say that Greg is back.
So I, I apologize.
Uh-oh, we can't really hear Greg still.
Greg, sometimes it helps if you cut your video feed so we just have your audio. Sometimes.
No, it doesn't sound like it. Um, so while we're waiting for that, is there any other um, comments opposed or in favor? Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Yes. Madam Chair, we had Director Collier, we had, still had Shannon Leonard and Matt Moss again.
Uh, Shannon.
Well, we had Director Collier.
Shannon, I'll go last.
Just wanted to point out that um, so zoning in a P, for parking in a PRO, you get a thirty percent reduction. Um, in this case, thirty-one spaces are required. They're proposing forty-four spaces. So technically, if they got rid of those first two spaces along the PRO, they would still be meeting code because they are about thirteen spaces over parked.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Freddie?
Yeah, I, I want to be uh, clear uh, about something um, with respect to uh, what we do in our, our role, which you all know. Uh, when we look at these projects and obviously Metro Health is an entity that we fully support and uh, definitely uh, applaud the investments that are being made um, in the neighborhood by Metro. Uh, with this particular building, everyone uh, made uh, accurate statements about the uh, conditions at the site. How long this building has been sitting here, um, but also with respect to what's being requested. Um, what's being requested, some minor enhancements that can further support what the future of this street holds. Um, what's being asked, I don't think is far-fetched at all, uh, by adding uh, some additional uh, space to improve that pedestrian experience, given this building is at an interesting uh, configuration. I never liked the configuration of this site. Um, this sits at the corner of two uh, uh, pretty much main streets. And um, the uh, architects did a really great job of eliminating that curb cut. And that's in large part because of the PRO requirement. Um, but with respect to the experience that pedestrians have, given the side of the building is technically facing Lorraine. I think um, making some concessions with respect to uh, enhancing that pedestrian environment uh, within the parking lot area uh, is, is not a, 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 a huge ask. Uh, so um, I'm interested to hear uh, with respect to the hospital, um, you know, the willingness to flex a little bit um, on that uh, uh, recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um
Uh, Madam Chair, Greg's, Greg appears to be back again.
Greg.
Let's try this one more time. Um, so
I'm sorry, Greg. We cannot understand you.
Third time's the charm.
Um, well, I, I really, um, I think I would like to um, uh, just to keep things moving. Uh, close the, this portion of the public comment and ask commission members for some discussion of how to handle this.
Uh, we had Matthew Moss with his hand up again. I'm not sure if he wanted to speak again.
Um, well, I think the difficulty is going to be because we don't, we can't hear from Metro Health. We really have to think about how we're going to handle this. So um, if I could kick this to my commission members about how to handle and light up not being able to hear from Metro Health.
And Madam Chair, Matt, I suggest that Greg uh, tried to just call in with his phone so that we can at least hear him. We don't have to necessarily see him while we, while the commission discusses it. Thank you.
I, this is August. I personally believe what Freddie summarized is, is at least, I think it's doable. I don't think it's out of the stretch of the imagination. Unfortunately, this building is, is ass-backwards. And so I think there should be something more intentional to help overcome that reality. And the reality is, we could be better. We could do better. When, it's, this building's not about the building. It's about people. It's how people move, how people wait. I got to believe there's going to be a fair amount of people walking here. We're getting off the bus to go here. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay.
And, and Madam Chair, I just want to be clear on what the recommendation is because I think forty feet is, I mean, forty feet would be, that's you're putting a building on the corner. And then I think that's honestly trying to micromanage private property. So, and I don't think that that's what's being recommended here.
That's not, that's not, that's not the request.
Okay.
Okay. So it, the request I think we're hearing is some additional space and landscaping along this street in the five to ten-foot range, but you know, no more than that. Is that what I think we're hearing?
Yeah, I think, I, I will say this if I may. I'm sorry, uh, August.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, this is a very capable architectural team. And we have no doubt that uh, the hospital system uh, is capable uh, by way of the investments that they've already made. Uh, my kids attend Urban Community School. August, you're very familiar with Urban Community School. Uh, Metro Health worked very well uh, with us through making sure that, you know, that environment was such that it uh, complemented the neighborhood, but also was very much respectful of the internal workings of the campus. So there's no doubt in my mind that the architectural team from uh, uh, Metro Health Hospital Systems that they partner with, you know, can come up with, you know, a uh, you know, a solution at that edge. And I'm going to emphasize edge because we're not suggesting that you go forty feet into a site where you have limited parking at all. Uh, but come up with a solution that can enhance that pedestrian experience on that uh, on that corner. And I'm sure that the councilman and others would agree, you know, that improving that experience along that strip uh, would be a plus uh, for the project.
I mean, I think the commission could, could also allow this to
Let me unmute, so.
To go to stop.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I didn't raise my hand. This is Amy with Prospectus. Um, I have, I have Greg Zuka on my cell phone on speaker. We were going to try, see if that would work. Are you amenable to that?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Greg, you're on.
Okay, uh, I, I apologize for the technical difficulties I, I was experiencing. Um, so I, I, not having the uh, uh, um, opportunity to hear all the comments, I just wanted to, uh, I did get some of the, the um, comments. But um, so I just wanted to express that. Um, so we have made some concessions again. Um, have, you know, in total agreement, uh, we eliminated the curb cut on Lorraine Avenue uh, to increase pedestrian friendliness and also as a safety issue. Um, and in addition to that, uh, we have moved, uh, we will be moving the, the fence uh, around the parking lot um, six feet to provide six additional feet to the public right-of-way. Um, and then at the corner, we're eliminating a parking space to allow an additional ten feet of public space at the corner um, to allow for a more pedestrian-friendly feel at that site. Um, one of the concerns that we do have is the elimination of parking, uh, additional parking because uh, this is a dental clinic that's going to have fifteen operatories. Uh, in addition, we are bringing uh, to the site, uh, thirty employees uh, that will also be at the site. Our concerns with eliminating additional parking is going to result, uh, unfortunately, probably with some uh, parking along West 38th Street, which is primarily residential street. So uh, we want to try to avoid that from happening um, with the constraints of the site and the uh, availability of parking around that, that location.
Okay, thank you, Matt. That's, okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
My question, I have one question, Madam Chair, real quick. The additional ten feet that you referenced and the other six feet that you articulated, is that already in the drawing here? Is that additional?
Yes, that is in the, that is in the site plan. That is, I believe, that was presented. So uh, by relocating the fence, we're providing six additional feet along Lorraine. Uh, uh, for, you know, the ability to improve the, the transit stop there. And then right at the corner of Lorraine and Fulton, by limiting one parking space, uh, we are providing uh, ten additional feet. Now, there is a tree uh, that is located there, so you know, I'm not a hundred percent certain from a uh, design perspective uh, what, you know, additional elements have been brought. But um, you know, we are willing to uh, provide ten additional feet and eliminating a parking space to provide that.
Okay.
Uh, Ma- Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion, but I would like to make a comment first.
To make a comment first.
And, and hopefully I don't offend anyone. The reality of it is, Cleveland needs to grow up.
The reality of it is, Cleveland
We, if we're going to create an urban environment, if we keep compromising, then we're never going to be any further than where we started. And, and right now, I don't think we're asking for a huge lift here. And so what I would like to move to, for the applicant to do, is to, to prove this, obviously. But with the, the caveat that they were with planning, to come up with something that's better than what was presented. but with the caveat that they work with planning to come up with something that's better than what was presented. Come up with something that's better than what was presented.
I know you're proposing, August, but the motion that they they come to staff.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of, there's a lot of feedback. I can't hear.
I think Greg needs to get off the phone. There you go. Um, so, um, so what I hear is a motion to approve what that they work with staff on some additional enhancements. Um, and and I think what your motion is to the rest of the commission is that it would only come back if they can't come to agreement. But if they can't, you don't need to come back. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. A motion and a second. Um, Michael, can you take the role?
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Yes.
Slife.
Yep.
Okay. And before we move on, I really want to thank Metro Health for all their work and also staff for all their work. I think this is a much better project because of the collaboration and the work together. So I think you guys can come to some additional enhancements and get this done. So hopefully we won't see you back here as that. Thank you all. The next item is lots put in consolidation for permanent parcel number one-two-zero-dash-three-one-dash-zero-three-six. Uh, this is at nineteen oh nine East one hundred and twentieth Street. Who is here to present this one?
Looks like we have Ed and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try the last name. Go ahead, sir, and unmute yourself. There you go.
Yeah. Hi, Ed Slusarski.
I would not have gotten that right.
Most people don't the first ten or fifteen times. So I've been worried, married to my wife for thirty years and she can't quite pronounce it right yet.
Okay, do you want to talk about this?
Do you want me to just, just proceed or?
Yes.
Tell me when to change the slides.
Okay. Um, yeah, the proposal here is for, it's a, it's a single-family resident residence house on the East one hundred and twentieth Street right now. And the proposal is to convert it into a two-family home. It's a multi-family district there. And the purpose, the purpose of the, of converting it is to use it for housing, temporary housing, for students and members of a Christian church that's nearby. And, um, uh, the ownership would be, it wouldn't be the church, it would just be private members of the church. And the, um, but you know, the most important part of the proposal, as you'll see in the succeeding slides, is the, is that we want to basically split it into two, two or three, well, actually three parcels, because it would be two, uh, two individual parcels for the building set up similar to like a condominium or a townhouse. And then the surrounding, the remaining surrounding lot would be, would be like common property. And, um, then the, um, each, each unit would be roughly about the, about the same size. They'd have, I believe we have like five, like five bedrooms in each unit. Uh, so there's almost like a total of ten, ten bedrooms, the way we have it laid out currently, uh, which would show in maybe, maybe another couple of slides forward of that where the floor plans are. And as you can, the, the initial or the, I think with the second slide, if you maybe go back to that one, that one showed, you know, the amount that pink area is, is basically the amount that we're expanding beyond the existing building right now. And the height of the building will remain about the same, you know, we'll, we'll adjust the roof line so it stays within the thirty-five foot, thirty-five foot maximum height for that area. And there's also a similar, if you scroll through or maybe towards the second last or the last one, there is a, um, there should be some more slides after that one, I think. Yeah, that's showing basically the neighborhood and the slide on the lower right there shows a property that is similar that they parceled off. It was apparently a single-family or maybe a multi-family building originally. I didn't have time to get the, the actual plat from when it was divided, like, you know, I think back in two thousand and twelve or something. But it's, it's basically the same thing that we're trying to achieve here. It is on a, it was, it was originally a, a single lot and they parcel it off into two into three parcels being, you know, one unit of the building, a second unit of the building, and then the common property surrounding it. And I believe that the site plan shows kind of how they configured it from what I could gather from the, uh, uh, you know, the county website without actually going, you know, getting the actual plat for the property. And then if we look, if you want to look, if you want to look a little closer at the floor plans or maybe the front elevations, we haven't looked at those. That'll probably be, and that's probably kind of an important issue. Uh, the, the elevation to the left is sort of what we have in mind for the front elevation. And then the two on the right are the side elevations and, you know, the rear elevation will be somewhat similar in, in, in texture, of course, those won't even be visible from the street, maybe just to the neighbor, to the rear of the property. And if you're familiar with that neighborhood, it's kind of a, uh, a small area that's kind of tucked away in the triangle between Mayfield Road and Euclid Avenue. There's some light industrial stuff there, I think, and maybe some commercial stuff, but it's primarily those two, three or four streets over there are primarily like multi-family residences there. So that's, that's basically the gist of the proposal. I don't know if you folks have any questions or?
Okay, thank you very much to commission members for any questions or comments.
Madam Chair, we have Carl Brunches with his hand raised from Landmarks Commission.
Okay, Carl.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This property is located in the Little Italy Historic District. And this has not gone through any design review yet, has not been approved. And we would ask that this be tabled for six months with the applicant to go through design review to see if this would be approved and appropriate for the historic district.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Carl. Um, I do have a question, uh, to commission members also two years ago. But, um, this is for me highly unusual in that, um, this, what you're proposing seems more like a condo proposal than a lot split. We, I've never seen a lot split like this before, so, um, I am very confused and it really to, maybe more to staff about how this got here. Um, because I have never seen a lot split like this. This is really a single site that has multiple units that would have a condo association with them. So I'm not sure I fully understand, but I'm gonna kick it to my other commission members.
I concur, Lily, and I'm not, I have, I have no words, which is typically not my, my style, so.
I move that we table it for further review by, uh, other bodies, potentially landmarks.
And and I ask also that city planning staff really work with this applicant to see what they're trying to do and then support them in the proper kind of solution. This is not, you know, for me, there, there are solutions for this, but this is really not the one that should be before us.
Madam Chair, the applicant also would like to respond. Sorry, August.
Okay.
Yeah, um, yeah, the, yeah, perhaps our, you know, the way we're proposing it as a lot split is, is kind of a misunderstanding on our part of the, of the, the type of, of, of property that we're trying to put together here. We're, again, like I said, we were kind of patterning it after that other property that was at, I believe it's nineteen eighteen, I think it's nineteen eighteen, East one hundred and twentieth Street. You know, and again, like I said, and unfortunately, I didn't have the time before this meeting to get a hold of the plat because it can't get it online because it's too large. I actually have to send it away for it. Uh, and I guess the, either they mail it to us or I don't know if they're, I don't know if they're available down at the county to actually go pick it up or anything or pick up a copy of it or to review it.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion from Diane to table.
A second, sec, well, I'm sorry.
And a second from August.
Yeah.
Commission members. Um, should we have a vote? To Michael.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
August, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Okay, um, so the next item is another lot split, permanent parcel number zero-zero-two-two-three-dash-zero-one-eight-one-nine-and-two-zero. This is one-six-six-six and one-six-seven-zero-West Sixty-Ninth Street. Um, and looks like someone is here from Detroit Shoreway to speak to that.
And we also have Adam Davenport with his hand raised.
Hi, everyone. Uh, thank you. Mike Lingohart, Housing Director, Detroit Shoreway Community Development. Uh, thanks to the commission for allowing us to present this today. Essentially, what we have here is a split of a lot that we were, we would be splitting to provide off-street parking to a northern neighbor and a southern neighbor. Sixteen sixty-eight, ninth being the lot that would be split. Um, the motivations for this are really twofold, one being to park them on a heavily congested street. Uh, the second being is honoring the commitment that we made to the southern parcel owner that we would work with them to acquire off, acquire this sixteen sixty-eight West Sixty-Ninth parcel for off-street parking purposes. Uh, sixteen seventy, the southernmost property there was a condemned structure back in twenty fourteen. Um, and part of the, the verbal agreement we had with them was, uh, we would support them in their endeavors to, um, you know, secure parking with the understanding of their efforts to preserve this, this historic, the structure. Um, so that's, that's the motivation here. And then, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. I appreciate the, these are, the first picture that you just showed is the southern one. And seventy, uh, the other one is a, uh, exterior photo of sixteen sixty, which is, which is to the north. Uh, we're providing off-street parking to both of those, those, those properties.
Okay, thank you. Uh, commission members, questions? Um, I think Adam has his hand raised as well.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I have a couple more slides because I do want to provide a couple more context items with this. Uh, I'm not sure if they were included in Maurice.
One second, I'm having some technical difficulties. I, I'm gonna have to find them. I thought they were in here. Sorry.
No problem. I'll keep, I'll keep talking in the meantime. This, this house that you see on the screen right now was a renovation proposal that came to us through Building Housing. When we talked to them, we also, they also expressed interest in off-street parking. Uh, per our code, this is, um, a kind of a substandard lot. And although they have a parking pad in the front, they expressed interest for, um, off-street parking in the back. Um, okay, thanks, Maurice. Uh, so for some context, this, this lot is about a seven-minute walk from Gordon Square proper. Uh, we worked with the applicants to display that on the, the lot in question that is, is being discussed to be split, that it is a regular-sized lot for the neighborhood over there and it should have, um, a new single-family dwelling unit in the future. This is a lot that would be of market value if this was on the market. Uh, CCLRC currently owns this, this lot. They are beginning to develop their own properties uh, through a, a seemingly legacy pass-through agreement with Detroit Troy. This is how this is coming to, to you today. But, uh, city planning staff worked with, um, the applicant, I guess, the, the renovator to the north and kind of informed Detroit Troy that, that we would not be in support of this, that we would want to see a single-family house on this property. And, you know, in that effort also, we gave them examples of, of houses that, uh, recently sold that don't have off-street parking. Uh, that's the next slide. And then the third slide that Maurice has is situations that city planning staff worked to kind of explore different scenarios of off-street parking for the three houses if that was the choice. Obviously, this is, uh, you know, these, these scenarios on the screen right now are not really, they're not probably normal or conducive. We recognize that. That's why, uh, you know, we would prefer just to see a regular, single-family house in the lot. The, the rehabbed house to the north still has off-street parking in the parking pad. Um, but, uh, I don't think all three kind of requirements of off-street parking for all three houses would ever be satisfied under, under many scenarios. So, um, uh, I guess this is, this is kind of a case also where, um, the vacant lot in question that, that is being proposed to be split, um, had thirty thousand dollars in back taxes. Um, those were obviously wiped clean for CCLRC to receive the property. And then, uh, you know, the sale of this would go to the private landowners adjacent to the property with the city receiving, you know, little to no benefit of recouping those kind of thirty thousand dollars in back taxes. Um, it's also across from a school and it's about, you know, a ten-minute, less than ten-minute walk to Gordon Square. Um, it's, what I see is a highly desirable parcel, parcel in general, uh, and should be kind of reserved for single-family development. Thank you.
Okay, um, I think that's all the hands we have raised. Commission members, unless there's anyone else?
Uh, God. Possible to provide, but I, I do know Councilmember Spencer provided a letter of support. Uh, I'm not sure how those are typically, typically handled here, but I just did want to add into the, the record here.
Thank you. That's important. So, um, commission members?
Uh, Maurice, can you go back?
Go ahead, August.
You're, you're, go ahead.
To the proposed lot split.
I'm sorry, which slide? I can hear you first.
The proposed lot split side, the plat.
The first one.
That one?
Yeah, thanks.
It's kind of hard to see, but essentially the parcel A, um, is currently a smaller parcel where the, the rehabbed house is on. Uh, the middle parcel unnamed at this point, uh, would be a typically dimensioned lot. Uh, parcel B has an existing house on it that an owner lives in and has lived in. Um, and so this, this, this last book proposal would prevent any future at all besides just parking.
So each house has their own lot, basically, and they're both existing.
Each house has their own lot already. Uh, there's a, a vacant lot in the middle. Yes.
Yep, I got it. But I mean, they share the lot now.
Uh, no, it's, it's a separate lot owned by CCLRC.
Councilman's, Councilman's life has his hand raised.
Thank you. I, I lived directly behind this for about three and a half years, so I'm very familiar with it. And, uh, you know, I know there's a lot of precedent for shared driveways in the neighborhood. And on this stretch, the, these kind of between sixty-fifth and sixty-ninth, there's a number of instances where people don't have uh, driveways or full driveways. So to kind of with all that, I think what Adam's suggesting wouldn't be out of character with the neighborhood. So I suppose I'm interested if that's been discussed with, uh, development corporation and everyone has an option and, and how those conversations, uh, were, you know, were received.
Yeah, I, I think I can, oh. I can speak to that as well. I, I, I can say that we, we, we did speak with Adam, Adam Davenport, city planner um, in regards to proposals for the development site in terms of, you know, the possibility of having that shared, that shared driveway for the three different lots or, or what have you. Um, ultimately, and leadership at D S C D O has historically been, um, uncertain about these shared driveway situations and that we've heard a, a number of complaints. Or I, I, I don't want to overstate it, but we do know that they, they do sometimes lead to, um, you know, issues in the neighborhood. And so we decided to avoid that. We also thought it would be a real challenge, right? I mean, uh, we can certainly, you know, sketch that up. But in practice of, of getting that shared driveway for three different lots, I think would be considerably challenging given the, the size of the lots in question.
I think that's all accurate. And to Councilman Slive's point, you know, we don't see, we see a few shared driveway situations when we see, when we review new house proposals and city planning. We don't see too many. I guess, the sketches on the screen before were exercises in displaying that this theoretically could be done, although it's probably, you know, it probably would not happen where all three houses would then have off-street parking. In many cases, of scenarios that I would theoretically see, I would see only two of these houses having off-street parking, leaving a third to not have one, which was kind of how I want to display recent sales in the neighborhood where there have been sales of houses that, you know, I guess are a smaller price point or more of like an entry-level price point to homeownership, that don't have off-street parking. I think our main concern here is, you know, not necessarily getting shared parking, but kind of losing the streetwalk fabric of another house potentially in the future.
This is a hard site, guys. This is August because of the kink in the road, the dog leg. It's, I, gut feeling, I don't generally have an issue with what you're proposing. And I agree with you, Adam. You know, the likelihood of what you're proposing happening is probably remote. And if this weren't a kink in the road, I probably would totally agree with you. So, this is, I don't have an issue. I'd like to hear from the other commission members.
Any other commission members?
I don't think it's the worst thing in the world. I know the code requires off-street parking, but, you know, no one in Chicago has a problem with parking on the street. So I think that there's some neighborhoods where that works well, and this seems to be one of them.
All right.
So, August, are you moving approval?
Yes, I was gonna move to approve as presented.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Michael, can you call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slive.
Slive, Charles?
Oh, I said no, I'm sorry.
Okay. We have one, no, motion carries. The next item is something that was tabled, so I'll read the item, but we'll need to remove it from the table. It was permanent parcel number 004-09-060. This is 2053 West 13th Street. Can I have a motion to remove it from the table?
So moved.
Second. I will motion in a second. Michael, can you call roll?
Downing. Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slive.
Okay, removed from the table. So, who's here to speak from this, from Wesley Harper Horton Architects?
And we have Wesley Harper.
Good morning. Thanks for having me again. So, yeah, presented last month. And there were some questions raised about, you know, the sequencing of the lot split for this project. Typically, you know, when we approach you with a lot split request, we have a final design together for the project. In this case, what we're looking to do is take the existing parcel, next slide please, Maurice. Let me go to the next page. Yeah, so currently, you know, we have an existing parcel that is along Abbey between West 13th Place and West 12th Place. And so, the idea is that we'd split off a vacant parcel, a portion of this parcel, to then market it as a custom home site. And so, at last month's presentation for this, there was a concern put up by just the sequencing of it. You know, not necessarily an issue with splitting the lot itself. And so, what I wanted to do to quell some of the issues that should have was go to the neighborhood, go to the block club. Not the lot split. I think go to the next page, Maurice. And so, what we're looking to do is create a new parcel that allows for a single-family home to be built on. Architects would act as the designer and potentially the builder for the project. And so, the idea is to put them up on the MLS, the Realtors' website, market this new parcel for potential development of a single-family house. The dimensions that we're proposing are conducive to that use. It's a multifamily zoned area. And so, what we're asking for is, you know, with the fact that we've went, the community, they were supportive in general of the split and of this vacant parcel becoming home to a new house, we'd ask to maybe start the conversation again and see if those issues that were brought up last time could be quelled. And so, what we are proposing is a single-family house. You go to the next page, Maurice. You know, the style and design of the house would be somewhat similar to what you see here. We, of course, go through the typical design review process and Board of Zoning Appeals, and the typical process. But what we're asking for, we recognize it's a little bit unique. It has happened in the past. But we're asking to get the lot prior to an actual final design of the house. So with that, I'd open it up to questions. I don't know if the lead from Trumout West is on the call, but he can speak to our community outreach for the project.
Yeah, so I just concur with the characterization that Wesley, of the block club meeting, there was good discussion around this particular proposal, knowing that it is marketing for a potential house, and knowing that it will come before the community again for variances at a future date. So, I think it's good to have that information in that, I think Wesley was able to gather some good information from the community as far as how they felt about the house and the neighborhood and things of that nature. So, we look forward to, I mean, I'm fine with this lot split now, knowing that we'll have a final design in the future.
Commission members?
I move to approve as presented.
I second.
I second.
Is there any further discussion before we take the roll? The only thing I would say, and I'd like to put it on the record, is since we're splitting this and it's gonna go out for sale, is that, I think one of my fears would be that it transfers a few times before someone develops it, and someone comes in with three, four, or five units, which has been happening a lot. So, I think it's our intention in splitting this that it's gonna come back as a single-family house versus, you know, a dense proposal. So I just want to put that on the record. You want to call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slive.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next one is also Wesley Harper. It's permanent parcel number 001-10-005-074. This is at 9803 and 9805 Lake Avenue.
Thank you. So, yes, we were here, I believe, remember as well, to present this project for conceptual approval. We've been through the Far West Design Review for conceptual approval as well. And so, we're here today to speak to the proposed lot split. You know, having that confidence that this project, we've got conceptual approval. You know, we got into the more granular detail in the site plan. So now we have final dimensions that we're proposing. And normally, I would have presented the lot during the conceptual session as well, but we weren't finalized on the dimensions. So, next. Again, I think everybody's familiar with the site. We're on Lake Avenue. The house that you see to the left would be rehabbed as a unit condominium as part of this larger project. And then the vacant lot you see here would be developed, a six-unit condo structure, and then four units in the back for townhomes. Next. Next. View towards Edgewater Park, and then a shot of the rear of the house, next. And then the existing garage, which we're gonna be rehabbing in the back as well, next. Apartment house to our west, next. The current parcel layout is the site with the home on it, 70 feet wide. That 70 feet dimension is incorrect, running 200 feet. And so, the vacant parcel is currently 60 feet by 200 feet, next. So what we are proposing is basically a flip of those dimensions in some ways, in order for us to accommodate this five-unit condominium structure and then the townhomes south of it. So, you know, the rehabbed home would obviously, you know, maintain a five-foot minimum dimension to the new property line, so we don't have to fire rate that existing home in any way. So, to me, this is really just kind of an administrative change, because both of these parcels will be the same developer at the same time. So, with that, I'd open it up for questions. If you go to the next page, Maurice, it'll just show what we're proposing on the site. Again, we have conceptual approval for the overall project. But I just want to familiarize you with the specifics of the project, and you can probably go back to the previous page for lots of discussion. Thank you.
Commission members? I move approval.
Second.
Move a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Michael, can you call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Booker. Yes. Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slive.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Wesley. Two mandatory referrals. The first one is 9622020. This is supporting the establishment of a statewide network of state and US bike routes. So, this is exciting for me, so I can't wait to hear about it. Who's presenting it? Do we have Callie Messerman here as staff planner?
Hi. Carsman, the bicycle industry. Slides, if you could advance. Thank you. I'm excited to share with you today an initiative that the city of Cleveland is working on with the Ohio Department of Transportation. ODOT is undertaking a process to designate a statewide system of state and US bike routes. These connect to what are US bike routes spanning the nation. And so, they are working with each jurisdiction that owns or maintains bike facilities on the identified state and US bike route system to get a resolution of support for the designation of these routes. The goal is to have statewide connections for bicyclists going throughout Ohio and connecting to nearby states, driving bike tourism to Ohio cities, as well as making it easier for people on these bike routes to navigate, as well as helping drivers to know to expect bicyclists and respect their right to the road. Maurice, if you could, go to the next slide, please. As you can see here, they're across Ohio knitting these bike routes together. In different parts of the state, the routes are different bicycle facility types. So in some places, as we talk about the specifics, in Cleveland, we have trails in place. In other parts, there are bike facilities that require cyclists to share the road. But the ultimate goal is to have a network of signed and designated routes connecting people, as I said, throughout the state and to other parts of the nation. Next slide, please. In Cleveland, we have three main bike routes that are on the list to be designated as state or US bike routes. The first is the Ohio to Erie Trail, which connects from Cincinnati all the way north-south through the state of Ohio to Lake Erie. Our portion of that is made up of the Towpath Trail, and then the Tiger Trail projects that the Metro Parks are working on to connect from Canal Basin Park by the Cuyahoga River to Lake Erie at Edgewater Park. As you may know, all of these portions are off-road or in the process of being constructed to be off-road on trails. And that is West Bike Route 21 and State Bike Route 1. Next slide, please, Maurice. The second designated route through Cleveland is the Lake Way. This is US Bike Route 30. Portions of this through Cleveland are on trail, off-road. As we go through the downtown area, there is a shared routes with bicyclists in the road. This is currently signed and designated as the Cleveland Lake Road Bike Way. Next slide, please. Route to be designated in Cleveland is the Harrison-Dillard and Lake to Lakes Trail. As you know, through Cleveland, this goes through the Cultural Gardens and connects through Shaker Heights. The route goes from Lake Erie to the Shaker Lakes and Shaker Nature Center. Next slide. So what is being asked of City Council here to talk about today is a resolution of support to designate these routes. Like I said, ODOT is collecting resolutions of support from each jurisdiction across the state to take to the national designating body, ASHTO, to apply for state and US bike routes across the state of Ohio to be designated. What we are agreeing to with the passage of this resolution is that we agree with these route designations. We want them to be designated and part of the state and US bike route network. We acknowledge that they will be mapped by ODOT, and signs like the logos that are in the bottom-left-hand corner of the slides will be installed along these routes to help with designation and rider navigation. We also acknowledge that the route may change over time. So as bike facilities are added, trail segments are constructed, we can work with ODOT to adjust the exact alignment of the state or US bike route to be on the lowest-stress bike facility. But in general, we're making those connections and linking up with the neighboring jurisdictions and bike facilities in those areas. And finally, we give approval for these routes to be designated by the appropriate officials, which are ODOT and ASHTO. Next slide, please. What the resolution is not committing, doesn't change any rights for bicyclists beyond what are in the Ohio Revised Code. It does not add responsibility for us as the city, does not dictate that we have to build bicycle facilities. This is a little more applicable to places that may not have designated facilities along their designated routes. ODOT will work with us to develop and install the signage, so that is not a requirement for the city coming with this resolution. And we will be coming back to you like with legislation for additional authority to actually install that signage. And as I mentioned before, we know that these routes may be adjusted. So this is a resolution in support of the designation of these routes. Next slide. This shows the, expect through the statewide designation process. We're applying, well, this resolution will allow ODOT to put together a packet for the formal designation application. And then you can sort of see the signage planning and installation timeline unfolding from that point. I'm happy to take any questions or offer more info. We are excited about this, this plays into. This plays into goals at destination Cleveland about bicycle tourism in Cleveland, taking advantage of our only improving trail network. And so this is just another piece of developing that and making it safe and convenient for people to navigate what we have to offer here in Cleveland.
Thank you, Callie. Commission members, any discussion?
Sorry. We have Ms. Paul with her hand raised first, but go ahead, August.
Let's go ahead, Tommy.
Yeah, no, this is, I think this is, this is really exciting. And along with all the signage and really making it clear and dedicated to this, to this network, is there any integration of any type of public art throughout the, throughout the paths and the bike lanes and such throughout those routes?
That's not part of this designation. Plus, I know that that has been a point of conversation along several of our trails. For example, the Lakefront West Bike Route has some public arts and sea installations along it. So it's certainly something that I know me, as well as other child partners, are looking at integrating as often.
Is there anything that we can do as private citizens that sure just moves ahead? Because I know sometimes when legislation gets attached to other stuff, it gets lost or taken off. So should we contact council, Congress? Who should, who should we be talking to?
Any pushback or delays in this? ODOT working with, like I said, jurisdictions across the state to get all of these resolutions in hand to make their application. And as far as I know, things are smooth sailing at this point. But I can certainly let you know if we hit any roadblocks and need some additional support.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from commission members? There was a question.
We have Councilman Clive with his hand raised.
I was going to say for Councilmen like this, there was a question from John about NOAACA's involvement. I'm just curious, it was a good question. Is, is NOAACA involved?
I believe that no, in the selection and recommendation which routes are part of this state and US bike route network. I know that there were several working groups for that. They don't have to pass a resolution because they don't actually maintain or operate trails.
Just curious. Okay, Charles?
I agree that this is a great project. You know, when I was a kid in the 90s in North Carolina, they had these signed national routes. So I'm glad Ohio's getting on board. But just something to kind of put on our radar, and I've talked to Callie about this, is how we can do within Cleveland wayfinding between destinations for bikes. I think that NOAACA will have, you know, five minutes to this or 10 minutes to that. And, you know, if you're trying to get, you know, through neighborhoods, you know, you might not realize that it's only a five minute ride from the park to a rapid station or something like that. So as this comes online additionally, I think we should think through how we can work through our own internal wayfinding system to help people realize how accessible places are by bike.
Thank you. Commission members?
I move approval. And Lillian, I'm sorry that you're cheering today so that you can't do that because of your great dedication to this cause and this work. But I approve.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Michael, you want to take the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker. Yes. Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Clive.
Yes.
So thank you, thank you. I also look at it this way, it would be tragic if Cleveland wasn't part of the national network. So we better be part of the national network. And I don't know what the next mandatory referral is because I don't have it. It's added. So Maurice, can you either put that up or tell me what that next one is?
Yes, I can do that right this second. Let me go back. There we go. And we have James Woods.
Okay, oh, it's there. It's number 978-2020. Authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to enter into one or more license agreements with one or more vendors to design, install and operate roof mounted and ground mounted solar panels and battery storage on select city facilities. Also very exciting.
Yes, thank you, and commission. Jason Woodham, the city's chief of sustainability. This ordinance is an important step as we look to move forward on some of our climate action planning goals. When we reset our climate action plan in 2018, we did carry forwards of aggressive emissions reduction goals. So we want to reduce emissions 80% by 2050. And in our own internal municipal action plan, which governs what we're doing at city facilities, we have an aggressive goal of a 45% reduction by 2030. We know that the most significant portion of emissions in our region, about 50% come from energy usage. So we've got to look at ways we can transition both city facility energy usage and broader public energy usage over to more sustainable and renewable cleaner sources. In addition, we have a goal, and we're working through a fairly detailed plan to get to 100% renewable electricity demand by 2050. And solar installations such as these are a critical component of that. So what we've done is we've gone out to bid to look at about 16, not about, to look at 16 sites that are city owned properties, both within the city and some within the water system footprint as well, that would be suitable for either a roof mounted or a ground mounted installation. We've got about an eight roof mounted sites and six ground mounted sites because we want to get a sense of what we're looking at here. What we've looked for in our bid is a turnkey project. So essentially someone to come in, design, build, and then also continue the operation and maintenance because these aren't things that we have the technical capabilities internally to do the maintenance, the operation of over the lifetime of it. We've looked at multiple financing models. I think we're moving towards some type of power contract approach where the payment for the electricity will recover capital costs as well as the ongoing operation and maintenance costs for the facilities. We've got bids from multiple vendors that we're looking at different time periods. Those bids are still open, so I have to be somewhat careful in how I respond to those things. Now, we're looking at 16 sites. We're pretty sure that not all 16 of those, after a very detailed technical, financial and operational kind of review, are going to be suitable for installations. For example, we know City Hall is one of the 16 sites we included in our bid, and it's going to have some challenges. But we're still trying to kind of figure out whether or not that will be feasible or not. Some of the other sites may fall out for other reasons as well. But what we want to do is begin to push forward with projects such as these so that we can start to make some progress on some of those emissions targets that we have. And with that, I'll take questions.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Commission members?
I move approval.
Second, Fluker.
I have a motion and a second. Michael, can you take the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next one, I'm going to ask Charles to take over and chair the meeting because it's the E66 Street TLCI Plan. I think this is here for information, but since the foundation is funding this study, I'm going to recuse myself. But I'd like to also say to everyone, not just about this, but we still have quite a few agenda items. So if, if all the presenters going for it, and especially in design review, if we could keep things pretty succinct so we can get through by noon because we can't lose our quorum. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Charles to chair for this.
Okay, thank you. And just for clarification, if this is a special presentation and there's no vote, is there any need for people to be sworn in, Maurice?
No.
Okay. Well, with that, we have the E66 Street Implementation Plan. Who is here to speak on this?
Good morning, members of the commission. This is Michelle Bandi Zalatoris, an urban designer from city architecture. And I'm joined here today by Joyce Wong from Midtown, Protestant Engagement Leader Lexi Latimer, and neighborhood resident Keith Benford. And we recognize the timing this morning, so we will do our best to keep this brisk. This is not a typical, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, please, thank you.
Thanks. This is not a typical streetscape project. As a result of recommendations from the 2014 Lake Park Plan and to support the development of numerous new initiatives along E66 Street, including the New Cleveland Foundation headquarters, it was determined that the timing was right to move forward with a design for the E66 Street corridor to tie these investments together and better support the neighborhood. Our team was asked to approach this in a manner that would result in a 21st century street, a new prototype for how streets could be designed in the city of Cleveland. It became clear that to meet this goal, we needed to change the process as well. This has been a people focused process aimed to build equity and empower residents every step of the way. As you can see from our guiding statement for the project, the design has been developed in a manner that considers justice for underserved communities at the core of the work. Sustainability, accessibility, safety and supportive technology are the cornerstones. Next slide, please.
Thank you, commission, for hearing us on our project today. My name is Joyce Wong with Midtown Cleveland. And to give some context, this is an expansion or a redesign of the 2012 Lake Park TLCI. And we expanded the geography, which was originally from Chester Avenue to Euclid Avenue, just north of Lake Park. We expanded that to include Euclid Avenue to the south and then Superior Avenue to the north. And with that, you know, with that new study area, we saw that there are lots of neighborhood anchors like the Cleveland Foundation and the Innovation District that's planned, as well as the new Huff CPL branch, as well as new developments, including Eleanor Estates and a potential expansion of the Baseball Heritage Museum. And so with these neighborhood anchors, with existing anchors like Fatima and Chateau Huff, we really wanted this to be a community driven process that would connect Huff and Midtown. And then specifically as a streetscape project, connect across Chester Avenue, which has historically been physical infrastructure that has segregated and separated the two neighborhoods. And I did want to note for the record that these drawings are meant to have a draft symbol on them. And, you know, these are rendering of, these are not final. So go ahead to the next slide, please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Lexi, and I have had the privilege of working with this team. Our process again has been people centered. We recognize that residents are the experts of their own experience. And that is exactly how we approached at our first engagement at the Fatima Family Center in February, from which we heard from over 60 people, young and old, who told us that this process was about justice, racial, economic and environmental, and that this streetscape should really center accessibility and peace. Moving on to the next slide, and as you all can see, between March and July, we had to go virtual because COVID hit. However, we did not enter the Zoom space in doom and gloom. So Maurice, on the next slide, you can see that we really aimed to make this a celebration. We hosted virtual block parties, kitchen table discussions, and we really heard from residents who believe strongly in the power of their collective voice. They told us that success on this streetscape will be if they are heard, and it will fail if they are dismissed or ignored. Moving to the next slide, we know that justice takes courage. And residents have outlined the look and feel of what that could be, including a street that attracts.
Same code is still good.
Oh, including a street that attracts.
That's the one I sent you.
See, if you're not speaking, could you please make sure you're muted? Thank you.
No worries. So just picking back up on that thought and moving quickly along, that they outlined the, what the look and feel should be, that it attracts youth and families. They are envisioning a street that unifies Huff, one that has black ownership and is walkable. Again, reflecting on Director Collier's 21st century streets, what we've heard from residents is that a 21st century street in this case will be one that is just and one of the most peaceful streets in Cleveland. Moving on to the next slide, we have really centered youth voice and empowerment in this process. We do know that youth are our future, but we also know that they are our present and that they hold an incredible amount of knowledge about their lived experience. And with that, I just want to pass it over to Keith Benford Jr., one of our youth leaders in Huff and throughout the city of Cleveland. He grew up on E66 Street, and he's going to share a little bit about this youth design session and the youth advisory board. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Lexi. So in this meeting that we had back, I think it was in June, a lot of things happened. I think the two words that will best explain it is involvement and expansion. In that meeting, we were very connected. We were, they were very well synchronized in our agenda. And our agenda really was just to connect the people of Huff to 66th Street and really to get the people, the residents, to take ownership of the community that they're living in. More specifically, we had a lot of ideas that were around, that were pretty much around just involving the rest of the 66th Street corridor. So going past Wade Park, we were thinking about doing a lot of experiences there. And from that one meeting, we evolved into the youth advisory board and which is now like a board where we have a bunch of youth that are around my age that make decisions like this, like we're having meetings that are similar to just, that are similar to this meeting as well. So, so yeah, this, this, I'm very grateful for the opportunities that Midtown has given us and because of what they started is really big. And I cannot wait to do more work.
Thank you, Keith, and we'll pass it back over to Michelle on the next slide.
Michelle, I think you're still muted.
Sorry, thank you. The community's voices led this work, which resulted in an update to the neighborhood plan and a detailed streetscape plan that is ready to move directly into pre-engineering. We considered a range of neighborhood concepts together with the community seeking the development of safe and welcoming spaces infused with art, color, green space and places to connect with neighbors. Next slide, please. Two big ideas emerged, the creation of a black avenue lined with black owned businesses, arts and cultural uses that can serve as a cultural hub for the city. Next slide. And the creation of a linked series of public spaces throughout the neighborhood to better support the community and connect one another. Next slide, please. Informed by the youth design charrette, this resulted in a series of districts and community hubs with distinct themes. We also developed ideas for transitional spaces. This is a plan for a flexible parking lot that transforms to an adaptive community space when parking is not needed. Next slide, please. Streetscape is intended to tie all of this together. As mentioned previously, the goal is to create a new prototype for Cleveland. A 21st century street incorporates details that consider these approaches. We start, next slide, please. We started with the existing layout. The right of way here varies from 55 to 60 feet. The street is currently characterized by broken and missing sidewalks. Approximately 40% of the sidewalks are damaged or unusable or missing altogether. Low lighting levels and a significant number of utility poles characterize this space. Next slide, please. We looked at a range of alternatives that could incorporate a multipurpose path, green infrastructure, on-street parking, bicycle facilities and more. Next slide, please. And we ended up with an approach that rebalances the street to continue to support two driving lanes and on-street parking while providing new spaces for bikes and pedestrians and new approaches to landscaping along the street. Next slide, please. We have looked at different layers of detail along the corridor. While the previous image represents the basic layout, we have identified two districts along the length that will receive additional details of special paving, additional landscaping and infrastructure that supports the ability to close down these blocks for special neighborhood events. On the left, the orange block is the Cleveland Foundation block between Euclid and Chester. And then in the middle of the image is the Lake Park block. And the intent is that those can become places for special events in the future. Next slide, please. The following drawings demonstrate the design approach in plan, reflecting different zones of use, accessible path zone, utility zone, and green infrastructure and amenity zone. And this image takes a look at how that lays out in the Cleveland Foundation Block. Next slide, please. We began to consider details and materials that will be part of the project. Next slide, please. And we are giving particular attention to the Chester and E sixty-sixth street intersection as it represents a physical barrier between the neighborhood to the north and the amenities between Chester and Euclid Avenue to the south. Rebalancing this experience to help residents safely cross what is essentially a six-lane highway now is critical. Next slide, please. As we wrap up this phase of work, the community has expressed a desire to continue to be involved, and our team is committed to keeping community representation and leadership at the table every step of the way. It is our sincere hope that this work sets a new standard for how infrastructure projects get done in Cleveland. Next slide, please. And we'd like to thank you for your time today, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. This is a great presentation and just a couple reactions that I have. You know, I think you're right, Chester is, in many ways, you know, a bypass of the neighborhood, and people pass through the neighborhood, and I want people to realize that they're not passing through a place, but they're within it. And I think that by bringing this project down to Euclid and, you know, getting, getting that block into this plan is really critical and helps to break down what is a very big physical barrier within the neighborhood. I don't think people realize how close League Park is to the health line, but it's very walkable, but it's a fraught environment at this point. I know Councilman Jones has been very supportive and involved in this process, and I think the one, one of my big takeaways, and this could be expanded citywide, is that there's really a desire within the city among residents for, you know, restructuring our streets and making them walkable and, and, you know, moving beyond the built environment of the nineteen forties, fifties, and especially neighborhoods like this, which were, you know, heavily affected by, you know, urban renewal. So I think that this looks, this looks excellent, and I'm excited to hear feedback from my colleagues on the Planning Commission. And with that, is there anyone else that would like to comment?
We have Director Collier with his hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commission members, as well as those in the audience. There's a lot to say about what's taking place here on sixty-six. I'm going to start out by talking a little bit about the, the physical component of it. Obviously, as stated previously, this is a strategic street, and strategic meaning that it's really connecting the health line to the actual community, one community asset that has a lot of history and heritage that needs to be brought forward. And making this connection can really enhance that opportunity in doing so. The other component is this notion around building a Twenty-First Century Street, which is something that we coined to sort of brand and identify how we need to think about streets in the Twenty-First Century, that they're not just places for cars to move, but they're places for people and places for experience. And I think that this is a step in that direction, I think, for the city. And then the other component that I want to really highlight is the people component that's been talked about. Keith and Lexi and the work that they've done with respect to engaging, educating, and getting our young people involved in the process, that is critical. They've also been a part of the zoning work that we've done in the city. So I think it's very important that having that youth component and starting to build up the understanding of our young people who are really going to be the future decision-makers, I think is really, really critical. So we're really excited about not just this effort, but the process associated with this effort. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have Herman.
Yeah, just wanted to take a minute. I'm the Capital Projects Manager for Cleveland Public Library, and I just want to stop in as a cheerleader for this project. We have been very closely tied to the project as we're developing our new Huff branch and the work that has been done to bring all of the potential users and residents in the area has extraordinarily helpful to us in bringing information about our future patrons. But just that this is going to be a great project, and we're, we're very happy to be tied to it.
Thank you. Any other comments from any, go, I'm sorry, go ahead, Maurice.
I was just going to say no other hands raised at the moment.
Great. You know, and I'll just end, and this is maybe a comment to my colleagues on the Planning Commission as well as the Director. You know, we, it's always exciting to see plans like this, but obviously, this is just the first step, and the real challenge is implementation. And, you know, it, it would maybe be even just useful, and I could be speaking for myself, to get a deeper understanding of how we can advocate for these plans with, you know, either being Public Works or Capital Projects to ensure that, you know, these things are moving forward, and it isn't just that, you know, another set of pictures that gets put up. So if that's something we could do at some point or think through, I think that it'd be valuable because, you know, the real, the goal is obviously the implementation, and I don't want to lose sight of that.
Absolutely, and thank you, Councilman. This is Joyce. I wanted to say that we appreciate your, your intentionality and your advocacy, and we will look back with you when, when the time is right. We are moving forward with implementation with pre-engineering, and, you know, the intent is to really move forward implementation here, so we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Joyce, and thank you to the team for a great presentation. And with that, I will probably pass the, the theoretical gavel back to Ms. Curry, and we can proceed with the agenda.
Okay. Thank you all. And, you know, I would just comment to you, Charles, that the, the city, Cleveland Mayor's Office and Capital Projects deserves some real praise in terms of how they've been working collaboratively on the project and really open to the process, as well as taking a leadership role in the next phase. So the city is, has been a leader in this, and so I just want to say that. All right, we're going to move a little more quickly. We're heading into Design Review. We're going to start with the Far West. I need to swear in the speakers of the next entire sections as we go through. For these projects, as we see them, just know that the Planning Commission is most interested in the exterior of all the ones coming in front of us and any comments that you've addressed from Design Review, so that we can move pretty quickly through. So first one is F Far West two zero two zero dash zero one seven Horizon Education Center. We approved the conceptual approval on November sixth, so it's here for final approval. And there are some conditions that are attached, so if the applicants could please just address also specifically those conditions. Oh, and who's here to speak? If, if, if you could raise your right hand, and I think I can get this swearing in done. So everyone who's here to speak, maybe raise your hand and then say aye after. I said, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall in this hearing?
Aye.
Okay. Do, who's going to lead?
We have Mike, Mike Cloud with his hand raised. I take it he wants to lead?
Yeah, good morning, everyone.
Can't, we can't hear you very well. Could you?
Let me try to turn up the volume here. How's that? Is that better?
Little better.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. So what we're requesting today is both final site plan approval and lots of split and consolidation approval for this project. I'll, I'll address the site plan approval and our final review with conditions. At the Far West Design Review, we had a couple of items which we've addressed. The Forestry Department to incorporate certain species substitutions on the landscape plan. We added notes indicating that the fencing for the project shall be black powder-coated aluminum. We revised the elevations showing the masonry false facades returning around the building as requested by the review board. We made a revision to the cherry trees that are outside the fenced area for public use based on recommendation by the review board. And we have also, in working with Horizon, Cadell, and Smart Development, concluded a land swap purchase agreement, which addresses concerns for both Smart's redevelopment of Didi Terrace and this project, and we've attached that. And the final comment was that playground equipment will meet all required safety standards and will be designed by the owner's vendor at the time of building permit submission. The second item, if we can, let's click through some slides here and get down to the section on reapportionment. So currently, there are three parcels, and one of them is a parcel which, there are one undivided one-sixteenth interest for each of the townhomes of Didi Terrace. It's a landlocked parcel with an access easement. What we've worked out in the agreement between Cadell, Smart, and Horizon is that we will, Horizon will be granting part, the new parcel B that's designated with frontage off of Franklin Boulevard, and Smart will be granting, along with Cadell, because Cadell presently has one of the townhomes, will be granting the interest in the landlocked former parking lot to Horizon. And so we sort of clean up the apportionment here into a parcel A and parcel B. Also, as part of the agreement and as part of this project, will be the construction of thirty-two space parking lot dumpster enclosure for the use of the townhomes. Presently, there's not that much parking there, and this will give off-street parking back off of Franklin Boulevard. And then we'll also allow the balance of our site geometry, which has been vetted through Architectural Review, to take place. With respect to exterior, if we can scroll down a little bit. Recommendations, the Architectural Review, the elevations, we picked architectural elements from the adjacent Neil Terrace, which has been nicely restored and incorporated them into the design, and the request was that way from the streetscape, the two-story facade and the full masonry facade would be brought around, so that from the streetscape, that appearance is continuous. And so we made the provisions required by Architectural Review to accomplish that. They also reviewed material selections, which we picked to keep in harmony with the brick that's located in the area. I can spend some time on the landscape plan, going through the other items that we addressed if needed. I believe that was probably back a couple slides. So in this instance, some of the, the changes that we've made in working through the Architectural Review process is to establish one-way drop-off parking for the children and have right-turn only, so we're, we're being sensitive to traffic conditions on Detroit. We added much more robust landscaping in the front. We have far exceeded the foresters' requirement for trees. We have modified tree species. We've created three lanes of pedestrian access for those that may walk their children to the center. And again, we've made a commitment that we will obviously adhere to all safety requirements when we get to the final design of playground equipment for the children. So I believe that was the, the primary concerns. Is there anything else I can address on, on this project?
I will.
Madam Chair, we have Nikki Hudson.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Actually, to speak on behalf of the neighborhood, I live on West eighty-ninth Street, very, very close to where this project is. I would like to say that the neighborhood is very excited for this project to happen. We know that there's a need for, you know, early childhood education, and we appreciate that Horizon is coming into the neighborhood. We just want to make sure that what, what happens with the driveway in front doesn't make it more difficult for the people living here to get around. I know at one of, at the first Design Review meeting, a traffic study was asked to be conducted, and I'm wondering if, if that ever happened. Was a traffic study done for the site? And what accommodations will be made to account for the reduced traffic due to COVID?
Okay. To the applicant, was there any study or comment about the traffic?
Well, Nikki Hudson did, did, as an individual speaking up, asked for that. The Architectural Review Board did not indicate that that was necessary. They indicated that we needed to address drop-off conditions so that we don't have cars backing up on the street, which we've done. We've created multiple lanes, addressed that to the Architectural Review Board's satisfaction. I don't know what she's mentioning with COVID. COVID is not going to be a permanent condition of our lives. Certainly, this project probably won't even be constructed until long after people have been vaccinated, so there's not any sign-specific items that have been considered that relate to COVID with site plan.
I just, I just meant that if there was a traffic study done, the traffic study wouldn't necessarily wreck, wouldn't necessarily reflect the actual conditions once everybody is returning to work. That's why I mentioned COVID. And it was at the very first design, Far West Design Review meeting that a traffic study was asked to be done. Unfortunately, the neighborhood wasn't given the opportunity to get the last Planning Commission meeting, or I would have brought it up then. Also, I just, you know, I worry about a situation like the Starbucks on Clifton that, you know, we have shared, there are only two driving lanes along, there's a bus stop immediately to the west of this project, and any, does any traffic congestion isn't just going to, you know, negatively affect me and my neighbors, you know, turning onto Detroit, it's also potentially going to affect, to affect R T A transportation along Detroit as well.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. Um, we, for Design Review cases, there is, is not normally a public comment, but I'm glad that you're here to speak. So to the Commission members, any questions for the applicant?
May, may I address one item on the, on the parking before, before that?
Sure.
So, you know, there's a lot, there's been a lot of competing interests with this site, which we've attempted to balance, and we've, we've gone to block meetings, we've, we've worked with the CDC, we've worked with the Architectural Review all the way along. You know, one competing interest was we, they want the building as straightforward as possible. The second competing interest is we don't want traffic backing up. The other competing interest is we're really worried about the safety of the, you know, maybe one hundred children that are coming here every day. And so the compromise that was arrived at with Architectural Review was to get the building as straightforward as possible while providing this lane. And it's, and it's, and it's one way, but multiple lane drop-off to try to get as many buses and parents off the street who are bringing their child there by vehicle. Certainly, in a more suburban, suburban center where Horizon has many facilities, they do have them in Cleveland as well, I mean, the preferred layout for a site like this is to have a large parking lot in front with a large circulation lane, but that, that's in, you know, is against trying to get the, the forward-facing streetscape aspect. And so this is what we arrived at as a compromise to try to best meet all these competing interests for accessibility, safety, reduction of parking, yet trying to have a, a design here that's in keeping with the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Mike. All right, I'm going to close the public portion and ask that Commission members for any comment. I move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can you call the roll, Michael?
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Flucker. Curry.
Yes.
Flur.
Yes.
Gotcha. Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Okay, motion Kerry, thank you. Um, the next project is also in the far west, uh, two zero two zero dash two zero two seven. O K O Homes Detroit Shoreway, new construction. Anyone who's here to speak, I need to swear you in. If you could um raise your hand or say something quickly. Um, and so um, I think I have Greg, uh, who's speaking? Anyone else? Is Greg here? Are we sending one here to speak to this one?
Uh, I thought it was going to be Greg as well. I don't see him.
Okay, um, should we just move on and um uh?
I would suggest that, yeah, I would suggest that we do that.
Uh, we'll move on. I won't table it, but if we get.
Director Collier had, Director Collier, did you have something?
If we come back.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say come back to it.
Okay, and we'll decide if we'll table it later. Um, the next one is also near is is in the near west, not far west. Two zero two zero dash zero two two on Willie Avenue, Townhouse New Construction. This is Wesley Harper again, and Wesley, are you the only one speaking to this?
Yes, hello, thank you.
Okay, I need to just swear you in, Wesley. Uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth is your answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so the Wiley Townhomes uh were actually at the southern end of Duck Island. Um, where Willie or Wiley, depending on uh your pronunciation, uh, kind of split into two uh rights of way. Uh, one heads down towards uh Train Avenue and the other one uh is more of a pedestrian path that connects Columbus to West Twentieth Street. Um, next please. So here you can see our site relative to the uh primary roadbed of Wiley heading down uh towards uh Train Avenue. And then you see the little walkway just to the right of the cyan colored box. Um, that heads to West Twentieth Street, which is in the background there. Uh, and so the the site we're talking about is currently vacant. Um, there's been a good amount of new development that's occurred in this little corner of the neighborhood over the past couple of years. And so this is basically phase three of a larger development that we've been working with Matt Burgess and then uh Tremont West and then City Planning Commission, uh, Matt Moss, uh, putting a bow in this case. So our site plan here, we have north uh, which would be up in this case. We have West Twentieth Street heading north and south, and then you have Follett Court heading east and west. And so uh Follett is being currently utilized as the vehicular access for the five homes that you see facing West Twentieth Street. And then the five townhomes uh that are kind of branched off of the existing drive. Um, and so the the phase that we're discussing is of course the cyan outline here. And it's basically the next leg off of this existing drive. And so um we've got six townhomes uh facing the the Willie Bike Way is what we're calling it now. We have no um you know, control over that that property that is city-owned land. Uh, but we do look at that as a a large part of the the potential interest site, you know, being on that little walkway. The uh temporary uh construction drive that you see shown here uh heading towards West Twentieth Street was the result of some neighborhood uh conversations and uh pushback in some ways. Um, on basically loading what is essentially sixteen homes off of uh the twelve-foot wide Follett Court. Um, it was originally going to be another construction site, uh, but we feel that um you know, to get the support of the neighborhood, um, you know, we wanted to basically give over or allow a a drive there to connect to West Twentieth Street to take a bit of the pressure off Follett. Um, you know, we recognize that another curb cut is not a deal to the pedestrian experience and that's something that's very important to us. Uh, but that's the direction this has went. Next. The townhomes themselves, uh, we've got three buildings of two units. They're eighteen hundred square feet with roof decks. Um, the each unit is uh the same. And so what we have are three buildings clad in a horizontally oriented lapped cement board, uh, black window frames, and then the insets for the porches uh are of cedar. Uh, this project complies uh in every instance with the Townhouse Code. There's no uh zoning variances. The little wedge of green space that you see here is uh kind of an aspirational look at what this could be potentially. Right now, this hillside is quite overgrown, filled with debris and uh contains a retaining wall that is basically it's failed over the years. So um, we're hoping to eventually potentially uh work with the super district on a grant to redo this portion of the hillside. Next. Just another view from uh Willie as it drops down towards the flats. You can see we're looking to get uh some landscaping in between the existing bikeway and the homes themselves to get a bit of privacy, but um, you know, those first floor spaces would have either a a third bedroom or a home office. Uh, we think the home office is probably more likely in today's times. You can see a detail of the porches. We have uh what we're kind of calling in-house, you know, the the blade component that uh has the addresses uh attached to it. So as you're moving east and west on the Willie Bike Way, uh, you have something that's kind of reaching out uh to grab your attention and, you know, inform you uh of of these units being here. Uh, the porches, again, comply with the Townhouse Code and allows us a small sitting area or an area of pot plants and really make this a a green alley in some way. So next. Just you looking to the east sunrise, uh, the background to the to the right, you can see the Cooper Flats apartment building uh was approved by the committee a couple of weeks ago. So with that, I'm not going to go over that. Um, here we have an elevation uh within the existing context and uh that'll open up questions. This is but we received a schematic approval from Near West and we're here for a schematic review today.
Madam Chair, we have Matt Moss with his hand raised.
Okay, Matt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I would add uh to to Wes's presentation uh and reiterate that the Near West Committee did approve this as presented. Uh, this project started several years ago as a partnership with the Local Development Corporation, the City Land Bank and the development team uh to assemble these parcels, replat them into buildable lots and uh create some affordable housing and and reinvest in the in much of the vacant land here into new homes. And so that's uh overall, I think that goal has been achieved. I would suggest unfortunately that I I would uh recommend that the commission approve this with the condition that that drive be temporary. Uh, that site was originally designated as a home site in the Land Bank Agreement and the original development agreement. And I think uh a choice that we often face, and we faced it several times already today, is to choose between to have space for people and and homes for new residents or better access for personal automobiles. And I think that that that's a choice we have to make today as well and would recommend that that we pull to the original intent of the development agreement with the Land Bank and and try to encourage the developer to or or at least give developer the developer support in making that lot a home for another family, another individual or another another couple. Because uh that's what will contribute to uh this neighborhood in this city to become more walkable and more pedestrian oriented. So I would just make that comment because I think that's a choice we often are are forced to make. It's it's never usually black and white. But I think in this case, uh, that would be in the best interest of the city.
Madam Chair, we have Councilman McCormick.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Into the commission, um, I just a couple of comments on this. Um, so uh it came to my attention that there were recent conversations with the block club and the community about uh the access drive and it was represented that I had worked out a solution with developer. That is not true. I just want to be clear about that and on record. Um, I've had a lot of concerns from the neighbors. So Follett Court, I'm I'm acutely familiar with because when the original homes were built, it was impassable. So we had to come up with a solution to repave it in which I used ward funds to achieve that so that the folks that currently live there would have access to their homes. Uh, because before they didn't, uh, unless the city repaved that. It is a very tight alleyway in a court. And while in general, I completely agree with the walkability elements. Um, you know, I am very concerned and quite frankly, I don't know how the fire department would approve this plan. Uh, how there are home, it it's not just garages on the uh back end there. There are additional homes, as you can see uh back there in the drive. And and quite frankly, I I don't know how safety apparatus would get back there if they needed to. So I don't quite forget, I'm not concerned about volume of traffic at all. What I am concerned about is um, both, you know, vehicle driving into Follett, out of Follett, someone walking to and from using Follett. Um, and the interaction of uh pedestrian cyclist vehicle, vehicle, vehicle to vehicle as well as safety apparatus through Follett Court alone. Um, I really don't understand how that would be approved from a a safety perspective. Um, I have serious concerns about that and I'm finding out today that it was represented to the community that I had worked out a solution here, which is false. So I don't know whether that was an overlook by the development team. I hope that that was not a malicious intent to represent something that I had not done. Um, but really was not happy to find that out today. And the residents that live uh in, you know, this in these new developments understand that homes are being built behind them and all of that. But I believe they have very serious concerns about safety access as well as the ingress egress of the development. Uh, and so, you know, that drive was kind of a, not kind of, it was a solution to create more density on this site, to add six more units to total sixteen units that had been, you know, from what I understood. And again, I had not been involved in the most recent conversations at the block club or with the development team, but the idea here was, yes, we're not opposed to more density back here, but we need a solution to the already existing issue of Follett Court. Um, so again, I think loading all of this off of a small one-way alley is a problem, quite frankly. Um, and you know, from West Twentieth Street, this is not, you know, I I don't for the one or two or three or four cars um coming off of the other drive, I don't think that there is a serious pedestrian uh vehicle conflict issue that would happen on West Twentieth by having another drive here as you might, you know, could, as might be a concern on a a more busy right away. So again, I I I'm just concerned, number one, that this was presented to the community as a overall solution for this development. Um, you know, and and and, you know, for this development. Um, and I'm concerned that that's not being reflected in what city planning is saying, meaning the will of the community is not being reflected as well as the agreement, which I think makes sense. Let's add density here, yes, but let's figure out an agreement for safe ingress egress uh for the neighborhood. Uh, but again, I want to be very clear for the record, uh, what was represented in the community is not true. I have not orchestrated some sort of master agreement here that was apparently presented to the block club and the local designer view, and that is not true. So I don't, I mean, I think you're going to have a group of very surprised residents here because they believe something happened that did not.
Kerry, if I can speak to that. Um, the 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 information that was put out into the neighborhood that you uh stepped into the conversation between the developer and the neighbors was put out by the neighbors, not the development team, not the architect, not Mr. Burgess. It was the neighbors um in the, one of the neighbors in the five houses that face West Twentieth. Um, this project has been presented to uh everybody that has uh bought a a home here, um, originally approved by planning commission. Um, and so uh, you know, I'm I'm surprised that the thought is that the development team is the one putting out the information that you were uh stepping in. That was not, that was not our team. I can assure you of that.
And I appreciate that clarification and and I don't know if Khalid was in those meetings and can speak to that. Wes, I'll just note that uh it's my job to represent my residents. So when they call me, that that's what I'm hired to do.
Yeah, understood. Uh, I I I I I thought you had a a conversation with Burgess and dispelled the idea that you stepped in and told us that to do the drive, but you know, that case. Um, and so, you know, we work with the the neighborhood and we worked with Tremont West to come to this solution. Uh, and we're presenting it and I I I don't want there to to seem to be some uh, you know, false information being put out there by the development team. I mean, we've this is the third phase of this. We've we've done it the right way along the way and uh we're meeting zoning code and working with residents that I think.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm just, we just need to move along, but um I think you should talk to the councilman offline and talk about this issue. I do have a technical question. What are we being asked to approve here today since this is a design review case? And I'm not entirely sure a design review case would approve a lot split. So um I need to know specifically from um either Freddie or from staff, like what is the specific, this is a design review case. What are we being asked to approve and it's it's not final approval. Um, so please, someone clarify.
Madam Chair, we have Matt Moss.
Uh, Madam Chair, I believe this is on the agenda for schematic approval. So we would be approving the site plan. So everything you see in this turquoise outline on the screen right now is the site plan for this project.
Okay, um, so for schematic approval, it was approved just presented. Um, and um, and so what I'm not clear on is is what, you know, what it means to this project to or around this, the access or the drive. Um, I do agree with the councilman that it would be difficult for fire to probably approve this without that drive. Um, so um, commission members, I don't know how I'm going to handle this.
We have August Flucker with his hand raised.
Go ahead, August.
For the density that's there, they have one curb cut, I think is phenomenal. So I I think we sometimes you can't be purist about this. That doesn't destroy the fabric. So I would advocate for approving what's submitted here um with the caveat that um Wesley or Wes um takes takes this dialogue with uh Councilman McCormick McCormick offline to work out um the differences. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second Downing.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion before uh we take the roll from the commission members only?
No hands raised.
Okay, um, can we take the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
And uh process aside, I would say it's a very nice project. Um, I I like the design a lot and I also think that the overall plan for this is quite nice in terms of site plan. So uh congratulations.
Thank you.
But we'll, but we'll see, we're seeing you again. So our, I think our hope is that Wesley, you'll work more closely with the councilman and the community before you come back for final approval.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, Northwest two zero two zero, or this is Near West, sorry. Um, two zero two zero dash zero two three Parma Estates uh Community Center. Um, this is for schematic approval. Um, Matt is here. Um, is anyone else speaking to this?
Jay Van Tassel is here with Haven Park Communities, the owner.
Okay, I need to swear you both in. So uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this hearing or your answer to the penalty of perjury?
Hi.
Okay, um, please go ahead.
All right, so um, this is.
All right. So this is Haven Park me center. This is located just north of Brook Park Road. It's an existing mobile home park with primarily seniors. And there is an existing brick building located at the same location as the proposed building. And if you go ahead, two sheets, you can see the existing site. This is an existing brick building. It's got a mailroom, but there, and it's, there's offices, but there's not space for, for the community to gather. So this, this project would remove this building. And then if you go to the next sheet, basically replace this with a modular building and associated parking. There's 14 parking spaces, which is what's required by code for this, this use. And this clubhouse would include the office space, but as well as a gathering areas for the residents of the community. And then also we would across the street from the club or across, not from Brook Park Avenue, but towards the, the mobile park, there is a concrete pad which is shown, which would be to replace the mail units that are in the existing brick building. If you go ahead to the sixth sheet, this has the architectural views of the building. I could see we've got some wood paneling, reinforced panel board, which is this, the kind of shown in the O1 and O2, stone veneer, and then a metal along the roof. Or kind of the upper, upper portion of the building. And if you go through to the next sheet, this is the, the general layout of the, of the building. As I mentioned, it's going to be a modular building. So it's got three sections, but as you can see, it's got a office space as well as a large gathering TV area, and then a small food and beverage area for the, for the citizens of the park once we can gather again. So we are, we are here for schematic approval today. I'll answer any questions.
Okay, commission members, I would say that this one might be far enough along that we could have the materials come to staff and not need to see it again, but I'm leaving up to my commission members. It is here for schematic, but, but not sure that.
You would be okay with that, Chairwoman?
Okay, I move approval with the intent that the applicant work out final materials and details with planning staff.
I'll second Downing.
We have a motion and a second. Can you take the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
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 Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Okay, we, the next item is Northeast Design Review, the Huff Branch Library, new construction. This is for schematic approval. We saw this for conceptual approval on September 4th. This is the new Huff Branch at Huffany 66th Street. Anyone here to speak to this? Please identify yourself and I need to swear you in.
Madam Chairwoman, it's Diane Downing. I need to abstain.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have one abstention. Who's going to speak to this?
Rob Donalds with Moody Nolans on the line. I believe I'm also joined by Eric Herman with Cleveland Public Library and Daryl Nelson from Moody Nolan as well.
Okay. Do you all swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth as your answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
Take it away.
Eric, do you want to introduce a little bit?
Sure. So this is the aerial view of where the new Huff Branch Library is going to be placed at the corner of 66th and Lexington. We brought it in previously for schematic or for conceptual approval, which was done in September. And we have advanced the design and have some more things to show you. Rob, take it away.
All right. So just want to go ahead and make mention that CPL has been a great partner for us to go and work with. We've actually had a lot of access to different entities within the city of Cleveland. Councilman Jones has been a big advocate for our project. So we've been having engagement sessions with him pre-pandemic. And during the situation, we're all working remote, we have definitely had more than enough Zoom calls with different individuals in the community as well as CPL is maintaining a website to receive community engagement responses. So we're definitely not making sure that this is done in a silo. We're getting all the responses that we can. And with that, we've also been working with the city architecture team that's been fronting the spearheading the TLCI effort to make sure that we're aligning with their vision as well for what's going to be going into the center section. The project site is indicated in the design review map. You can see where we're located at. We're located at the southwest corner of E 66 and Lexington Avenue. Next slide, please. And a little bit of some of what's going on in the area. We've talked about E 66. And as we start to look at the area, we know that there's obviously there's Leek Park right across the street from us. Fatima, we have a number of influences within the area, but also we're looking at cultural and institutions that we want to go, we want to thrive and bring up. And next slide, please. Existing conditions currently, the site is land bank parcels. We are working with the city to go and get those obtained as well as consolidated. Number of different facilities were on the site at one point in time, but right now we're looking at this to be reimagined for use within the community. Next slide, please. Some of the context photos, we presented this before and we're starting to look at the warmer tones of these buildings that are around the project. So Leek Park across the street, Fatima is right across to east of our site. There's a building that's north of our, of our site that has been a potential a development area. And then there was also some residences. With the residences, we've also have gotten contact and feedback from these individuals, particularly the one is that's just south of us on E 66. Who's been a big advocate for us to maintain some of the plantings that we have have on site. Next slide, please. When we did have the, the engagement session with Councilman Jones, we did learn a little bit more about the uprising from the citizens. We learned that this is something that we want to go ahead and have the library tell a little bit about the story of as well as going to be the satellite location for the sports research center. The CPL has the largest sports research institution in the country. It's naturally recognized and we want to bring this here while at the same time bringing the story of Huff forward. Next slide. So with that, one of the, the designer that we've landed on is a term derived from Sankofa. It's an African term that means to go back for it, learn from the path. And it's a bird that actually is protecting the egg of the future. So looking at this as a designer for a project, we also then started to use this as a design narrative for our diagrams. Next slide, please. And with this, the building, we started to look at schemes where the building actually would turn back on itself. So looking at the ideas of how the building would actually interact with itself, how it would actually start to meld the new, meld the traditional and start to play around with some of the different materials of that. So we looked at this offset and also I would say not just an offset, but also a collective agreement between these two different paradigms. Next slide, please. The site plan, we have been working well with our landscape partners at Drew. And with this, we have positioned the building in such a way that it actually mimics the plaza that's across the street from Fatima. So it starts to engage and talk to that. Pulls back a little bit, and this goes back to what we've seen at the branch itself. The kids go out into the plaza space. They like to hang out. They like to play after they come there from school. So we gave them a little bit of space to start to let the building breathe and receive. The site plan itself, we have, we've already spoken with RTA and they're looking at this potential for the stop to actually be right out there in front of the building. And we've also been working with the TLCI improvements on E 66. So that's why the building actually integrates with its proposed 10-foot multimodal path that is proposed to go north, south on the east, I'm sorry, on the west side of the street. Coming off the backside of the building, we started to look at how, we do have to do a number of stormwater management systems. So instead of having it be one of the stormwater management systems that is just essentially a hole in the ground, we started to look at how it could actually be multifunctional. So with this one in particular, CPL has an interest for this to be a community asset. So we started to look at how the basin could actually become a reading garden that is more or less an amphitheater. So in the center, there would be raised amphitheater platform. We would have some seating going around the perimeter. So it gives us another opportunity for this to be a space for the community to come to. And that's all that this is about is about the community, how we can actually have CPL approve the committee in that area. The plantings, if you can go to the next slide. The plantings are all native species. We're looking at this being a lead version four project, actually going for either silver certification, if not better. So being mindful of that from irrigation standpoint, but also looking at the colors of the species. So these are species that will be, and different steels will be providing colors to the building that actually starts to mimic what we're looking at with the architecture. Next slide, please. The, the site amenities, we are actually re-reviewing this based upon comments that we have received from the, the design review committees. So one of the items here in particular is we're looking, we actually had a good conversation the group at City Architecture about how we could actually strategize bike racks. So we're actually looking at moving these closer to the building. For four, we had them just right off the path. And we are going to be providing a bike repair station. We know this is a destination for bicyclists within the community. Cleveland Public Library is a big advocate of electrical vehicle charging stations. So we're going to have that provided onsite, two charging points. And then we're also looking at the position of the book depository. So this is something that we're trying to strategize a little more so it doesn't impede potential pedestrian paths, but also makes it accessible to the staff. So these are a few things that we received comments on earlier this week. We're already starting to investigate, come back with potential solutions to go ahead and resolve that. Next slide, please. The lighting design, we were definitely running the photometrics, but right now we already are looking at more progressive fixtures being around the building that will actually complement the building design itself. So something that has a little bit of an angle to it profile, but also it doesn't throw light everywhere. The building packs will be pretty simple, minimal in how they're done. Once again, everything on this will be LED, so very energy efficient. And then when we start to look at the parking lot, very minimal, very efficient fixtures are what we're proposing at the site. Next slide, please. Just going to go through the plan real quick here. So we do have a series of community meeting rooms up towards the front. These will be available after hours. So patrons will be receiving key card access. So that way they can actually access those points when the library is closed. This is, once again, goes back to what the library is experiencing recently, trying to make itself be an anchor for the community, get all those resources available, even with the can't, even if they're not staffed through those hours. Bestville will have a 24/7 pickup drop box, similar to what you see with an Amazon location. So providing resources for people to pick up those materials if they just can't get to the library within time. Going back to this back part of the library itself, we have two meeting rooms that are very flexible. Trying to make those as adaptable as possible. So they could possibly be reading rooms one day. They could be a large gathering space the other day. And then they also work to go ahead and combine to the reading garden. So trying to give CPL more than enough opportunities to provide flexible space for their needs, for the community needs. And last but not least, making sure that the library itself still maintains the programs it has. So open stacks, access to a tech center, laptops, computers, but also opportunities just for individuals to come there, read and see what's going on. Next slide, please. The color palette, we were actually starting to edit this down, but the color palette itself, the glass is a low E anti-glare. So what you see within the white, we're actually just putting on the white and the black cardboard. It actually has a little bit of a blue tint. It actually works really well with the devices that the library is planning to use within facility. So we already started to do that analysis to make sure it works. And the materials that you see, so the, the roof, the metal trim and the storefront curtain wall, they're all clear anodized. We were able to go ahead and get everything that matches within that paradigm. So that way it, it works well. The rain screen actually is a Trusper product. It's a phenolic panel. And it has a little bit of a texture to it. One of the comments is for us to actually look at reducing the number of colors we have. So we're going to be doing that actually today during a strike to go ahead and get it from the four down to three and then try to make it work. So it's a little bit more effective. Next slide, please. The elevations themselves, we have that diagram that was beginning. So we had the red, we had the blue that we're offsetting. So with this, we have panels that are vertical and being offset by panels that are horizontal. They all have about the same trim profile piece. So the proportions are about the same. The colors are the same. And what we're doing now is, as you start to go through the next slide, please, we're starting to look at ways that we can actually take that, think what we're doing with the facade itself and start to simplify it a little bit more. The comments that the, the committee provided to us, but it looks like it's a little bit busy, that is competing with the form of it. So we're going to take a step back and start to actually do some editing before we come back for the next submission. Next slide, please. So as you can see in the rendering here, that you can see that the, the shape of the roof actually pitches through itself, come back and returns on itself. So it creates the envelope, pops up. And it gives a lot of natural clear, clear storage spaces for where that light can actually flood into the library through all hours of the day. And starts to go ahead and pull back. One of the things that we're interested to hear is that there's a line of the grandstands from Leek Park that we're demarking with our building. You can't see the grandstands unless you're actually in Leek Park. So we want to bring that to be part of the language, reinforce that, that connection to Leek Park and what it is. And then the back of this, you can see the foreground is the proposed reading garden. So trying to make that articulate, a nice soft space, maintaining some of the trees on the forest south side of the site, but trying to meld it into what we're doing. Next slide, please. One of the comments too is for us to look at the entry. Right now, the entry is actually underneath the clear storage space at Higher Bay there. So we are investigating that with our landscape architect, but also with the language of the building. So we're trying to make progress towards that within the next couple of weeks here, but it, once again, good observations that were provided by the design committee. Next slide, please. And last but not least, this is pretty much just what we're looking at here in terms of that the building comes up from the entry, pitches up, goes ahead, receives itself. So that way, as the building is turning back on itself, we start then and close the space. Trying to go through this pretty fast, being conscious, being aware of everybody's time, open it up to any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. Commission members, any questions or thoughts?
It's beautiful. I think it looks really, really great. Nice design.
I, I appreciate the fact that you all are working with all the stakeholders and partners to make sure we integrate and respond to all these initiatives that are ongoing and forthcoming. So that, that is glad, I'm glad to see that happening.
Do we have a motion? This is not for final approval. This is for schematic. Yes, okay. Sammy made a motion. Anyone to second it?
Second.
Okay, two seconds, which is great. Let's take the roll.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you for your time.
Now we have Northeast 2020 dash 045 Architrainer Infill Housing. It's a scattered site on E 73rd. This project received schematic approval and recently, December 4th. And so since we've seen this, and I remember the presentation, it was quite long. So I'm going to swear you in, but I'm going to ask that you guys really just focus on what's different to get the final approval. So just because we are running out of time on our agenda and remember the project well. So who's here to speak on this?
Adam Rose Kelly with our picture office.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as your answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
And this was approved local as presented. So please go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, there were just a few comments, so I'll try to point out those and flip through these very quickly. I mean, it is an eight-site shipping container development that you saw two weeks ago for final approval at this point. So it should be fairly fresh. But next slide. And these are the eight lots that we're looking at. Next slide. And there, there's a future potential for 28 lots for development here. This is just showing all of those lots. The Architrainer Project that's already been approved is on the left there highlighted in white. Next slide. And that's the Architrainer Project for reference. Next slide. The zoning for the area, we are in a multi-family district surrounded by general industry and local retail on St. Clair. I'm sorry, on, on St. Clair. Next slide. And we can go through the neighborhood images pretty quickly. If you want to just kind of flip through these, this is the corner of St. Clair and 73rd, or sorry, 72nd. And you can just keep going through these just for a quick glance. Thank you. All of these photos are on 72nd Street.
Stay with him.
Perfect. And that's Detour that intersects 72nd on the north end of the street. This is the first site plan, very few changes here. It was requested that we add a shrub in the front in lieu of a short fence. So in the front of this, this is the triplex site plan. We are, mailboxes noted there next to the driveway as you enter into that patio, so that was added as a request. One other adjustment that was made was just widening the path into the patio in the rear for the studio apartment, so we could get plastic to go there well enough. Otherwise, something not shown here at the last meeting was requested that we provide a hidden trash enclosure. So we are suggesting that we will provide that in the rear adjacent to the carport and attached to the five-foot tall fence. So that would just be built out into that fence, and we haven't had a chance to adjust that yet on this unit. And that would also be an enclosure for lawn maintenance type of equipment and things like that. Next slide. Just for reference, this is the cantilever version that we had shown last week that was removed from the presentation. Previously, we thought we were going to require a variance. It sounds like moving forward, January 15th, the city will vote on a seven-foot building line setback on the front. So therefore, no variance would be required for setbacks on any of these projects, assuming that that legislation passes on the 15th. Next slide. This is the corner lot that we have adjusted since the last time you saw this, been added. It was not really developed previously, but it's very similar layout to the other duplex, except that the curb cut would be off of Detour Avenue. It's a slightly simpler backyard and shorter driveway because of that. Otherwise, very little changes and easier to see in three dimensions anyways. Next slide. Floor plan, just for reference, and you can go through the next couple of slides. There you go. And then all four unit types that we're proposing at this point, we came to the board with two last time, the triplex and the duplex on top. Those have not really changed. We've just added the two alternate units below to add diversity in the neighborhood with a slightly diverse, I guess, different color selection as well that I'll go through in a little bit more detail in further slides. The triplex on the bottom left there, again, just the alternate facade to the one above it, and then the duplex, which is the ADA version of the one above, which would not have the 18-inch depth into the house. Next slide. And this is the triplex, which has not changed again, other than the fact that we did add the mailboxes in the front and the shrub. Next slide. Next slide. Next. And the carport in the rear, we did make a slight adjustment to that, and that's, yeah, we just simplified the concrete walls there just for budgetary purposes. Next slide. The rear of the triplex unit. Next slide. That just shows the side of the staircase in the polycarbonate. Next slide, please. And within that carport, next slide, please. And you can go through the elevations as well, just for reference here, we are under the height limit. And then jumping into the duplex version, this is different from what we had presented last week or two weeks ago. It no longer has the front cantilever. We may bring that back due to the new legislation. We've moved that cantilever to the rear, which puts the balcony for the second floor unit in the front with a small stoop as a porch. Next slide. And just in red there, you can just see for reference, that's where the Architrainer larger project would be, the apartment building. Next slide. And you can keep going. One slight adjustment there, if you don't mind backing up to the carport that's looking straight on. It was requested that we provide a little bit better backout clearance for the carport, which was really not possible with the site layout without moving the structure of the carport itself. So we actually moved the structure in, therefore you have an extra eight feet of backout clearance where you could turn your wheel and not hit the structure of the carport. So you will have 18 feet now, which is ideal. Next slide. And just the elevations, you can go through those again. And just focusing a little bit on the colors and the corner unit, since we didn't really look at that last time, the corner unit, we are adding a little bit of color to the neighborhood. The concept is essentially go from very, very light tones to darker tones on the other side, which is a gradual gradation. I'm hoping that the, this will help to kind of soften its presence in the neighborhood as you enter, especially from that corner lot with the, starting with a duplex as opposed to a three-story triplex. Would be a little bit massive on that corner. You can go to the next slide. Just showing there the blue staircase, adding a little accent of color there. You can see the triplex across the street through in between the two yards. It was requested that we provide some bike parking, so we did add a couple of lockable wall-mounted bike racks there, otherwise you can go to the next slide. The fence is 50% open, that zoning code regulation, just to keep that open knit. It's only three feet tall along the side yard, and then it jumps up to five feet at the carport. Next slide. I will mention, especially with this rendering in particular, these will all be shipping containers in design and construction, so what you're seeing here will be modified to have the full shipping container aesthetic. Just wanted to point that out. We are missing two windows on the side here, so you have your kitchen window, which is shown in all of the other more detailed projects. Next slide. And that just shows that kind of zero threshold entry for the ADA corner unit to diversify and keep some units accessible. Next slide. Moving into the neighborhood, contrasting colors moving to the dark on white. That's just one more image showing that. And then dark on gray on the near black. And then as you move into the neighborhood, it'll get to the fully dark units. You can go to the next slide. Yellow on white on yellow. And then, sorry, gray on blue on gray. Next. And obviously towards the end of the lot, this is moving towards the south side of the street, going with the richer darker colors. And then just looking down the full block where you can kind of see all of the units to some extent. Next slide. And this shows just the entire block with the, as I said, kind of gradation from the very light colors to the north, to the very dark colors to the south. Next slide. And probably don't need to go through this in great detail, the mailboxes that we selected, bike racks will, we're still working on selecting something a little bit more secure for that. Next. Materials have not changed from the previous presentation, still going with the wood, the container material, concrete standing seam, and then the color selection up to the right I've added. Next. And lighting has not changed. Next. One more. Landscaping, we're actually still working with the city forest area to get an appropriate landscape selection. It was stated that the eco tree would be a little too tall for the tree lawn, so we're going to make an adjustment there. We just have not made that selection yet. And these have not changed. We're going to eliminate the trumpet vine. It's a little too invasive for the neighborhood. But if you go to the next slide, we did add some vine plants that we'd like to do as climbing vines on the trellises that we didn't really talk about today, but that would be on the triplexes. So just a variation of color throughout the neighborhood.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt you. I think we have enough presented here. I'm going to ask commission members for questions and discussion about this. We're really here to approve the infill housing today.
Yes, I move to approve.
I second.
We have a motion and a second and a further discussion. I mean, we saw this, we, as part of the last project, it's a great project, so thank you, and we will call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
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 Slife.
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck. Can't wait to see these.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, we have Greg Saltis is now here for the OKO homes that we bypassed.
Yeah, although I, for the people who've been waiting and they weren't here, I feel like we should go through and take them at the end, just out of respect for.
Very well.
So, and we need to move quickly. We still have five more items, so I really ask everyone to please be succinct. Know that we really are focused on the exterior and the comments from design review. Northeast 2020-044, Original Glorious Church, new construction. This is conceptual approval. Who is here to speak to this? I need to swear you in. Janelle? Maurice? No one here?
I don't.
Okay.
Don't see her name in the list, that doesn't mean she's not here, but.
Okay, well, if there's no one here for that, we're going to move on. The next one is Uqad Corridor-2019-55. This is East 90th Street Apartments. I have a whole list of people here for this, so five of them, if you're all here, if you could just say your name quickly, and I'll swear you all in.
Dominic.
Alex.
Uh huh. We have Matt.
Matt.
Okay. Do you all swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you'll answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Yes.
This is conceptual approval. This is a revision from a previous submission, so please go ahead.
Okay, this is Dominic, I'll start. What we had before was a design where we had, the same, this is two phases. This is East 90th that you're looking at. We're talking about phase one being on the west side of East 90th, Chester's to the left. In the previous presentation, we had structured parking. We had a one-to-one ratio of structured parking. As we looked at the budget for that, it was just too much money for building all that parking, so we've rethought the project and we now have the building on a slab, and then there's a parking lot on the west side of the buildings. And the building's still aligned 90th as they did before, but in a different configuration. So if you want to move, the gray, the gray block itself is done phase two, which would be another L-shaped building, just creating a building along 90th and the parking then inboard. Next slide, please. This is the site, again, 90th is, you know, with phase one, two, three, and four, one and two to the west, and the bottom would be the east in this sheet, and that would be phases three and four. Chester on the left. We also want to be open 90th to Chester again, and we'd like to work with the city to create that connection on 90th and Chester. Some views of the existing buildings along 90th, next slide, please, on the right of that picture. You can just keep moving. Next slide, we're going to go fast. Again, you have the two phases that's shown in the site plan here. And there's 130 units for phase one, phase two will be about 90 units, and then the parking lot behind is a point one, a point five to one ratio of parking. Entrances along East 90th for the buildings themselves, an entrance on the parking side at the corners, the inside corners on the south or the left side of phase one, there's a nice patio which we've cited, and that's a common area patio. Inside the building on the ground floor would be a lot of the common spaces, and they'll flow in and out of that patio space. Next slide, please. Floor plan, this is workforce housing, so there are one-bedroom micro ones, some studios, a couple of two-bedroom units. The goal here is to provide workforce housing that we can deliver in this neighborhood for under $1,500 a month rent. The site plan also shows edging of landscaping and fencing, and go to the next slide, please. Next slide is just, you know, typical layout of the circulation inside with double loaded corridors, keep going, you know, placeholder for the other. So the building itself is, these are the elevations, we are working with three colors of masonry. The idea is to keep the organization of the masonry in the windows pretty simple and logical, and again, to keep this cost under control. We have balconies on, I think there's 24 balconies we have along 90th, so we have portion, certain units have balconies, not all of them will. The design of the building has got a base of masonry material, and then those vertical planes are, again, all masonry of different colors. As described, there's a colored metal panel between the windows, we're showing double hung windows. Next slide, please. And these are the other sides of the building, similar, sort of some randomness of the way the brick is oriented or colors are positioned, but again, repeating the similar materials on each facade. Keep going, please. Next slide. You can go to, keep going to that, just sections which you guys don't care about. Then these would, and this would be then a view of East 90th viewing the sort of the south looking north. The entrance, as you can see where the brick is the tallest, balconies, as we said, flanking the entry point, the three colors of brick, a lighter warm brick, a darker warm brick, and then a more colorful warm brick as the third piece. There's some bays we're creating with the windows projecting beyond the brick, as you could see on the left end of the short side of the building. We are creating a landscape edge along the sidewalk. These buildings are positioned similar to the way the existing three-and-a-half story buildings are, were positioned historically for the last 100 years in this section of East 90th, so the, sort of the positioning of the building is very much like it has been for the last 100 years. Next slide, please. This would be a view more towards the middle, looking sort of partially south, entrance to the left, and then the pattern of brick and windows. Next slide, please. And then this would be a view from the south looking to the north. There's the entrance where that green car is, which would drive between the two phases, and there'll be a gated entry at that point. Again, edging the sidewalk with some landscaping to find public-private space. Next slide, please. And then this would be along the rear side of the building. Next slide, please. And then this would be the last slide into the south where you see the common patio that will be shared by the tenants, and it's a common area with, you know, fire pit, barbecue, seating area, of course, some shaded cover. And so very quickly, very briefly, that's our project. So any comments?
Madam Chair.
Yep.
There were comments, which I tend to agree with, architecture needs to be more residential. I don't know what that means, but I think really being more contextual, and building massing, which I think is a big deal, because, you know, let's think about the narrative here. All these buildings along Chester are these big, huge institutional buildings that's not for the people in the community. And now this project is reaching back into the community, I think it should respect the scale in some way as it reaches back. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have Councilman Slife.
Thank you, and just a comment here, but maybe it could also be extrapolated out into other projects, and it has to do with the landscaping plan. It's a part of town where the tree canopy isn't as. All these buildings along Chester are these big, huge institutional buildings that's not for the people in the community. And now, this project is reaching back into the community. I think it should respect the scale in some way as it reaches back. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have Councilman Slife.
Thank you, and just a comment here, but maybe it could also be extrapolated out into other projects. And it has to do with the landscaping plan. It's a part of town where the tree canopy isn't as robust as others. And we're clearly seeing some trees here, but they're not the high, you know, high-growth, you know, maple trees. And I guess if there's an ability to set aside space where large trees would be able to grow and kind of contribute to that canopy, I think that that's something I'd like to hear about when this project comes back for the final approval. You know, obviously, there's a big parking lot in the back, and you have to have a number of parking spots. And but I'd like to know that it's, you know, if it's possible, to what degree.
So, I'm going to move, go ahead. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
I was going to make a motion, but if you have a comment, I'll wait until you make your comments.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Riley.
I was going to move to echo Councilman Slife's point about the tree canopy, and also the recommendations made by Design Review Committee.
Now, I'll second. I'll second that.
So, a motion and a second and further discussion. So, I will just say that I tend to agree a little bit on the, this is a project that is intended for worker housing, which, not opposed to that, but I do agree that actually the style or the proposed style of this building could be sort of thought through a little bit more to feel more contextual to the community or integrated into the community, even if it has this kind of density. So, for me, it's not necessarily about the density, but also about, especially because it actually does not come right up to Chester. There's this weird zone that's happening between a lot of projects in Chester with the way that the street cuts through, and then a house or a lot or two in between. So, it's a really odd moment that's starting to develop along Chester, not just for this project, but other ones. So, anyway, so if you could just think about that before you come back. So, we have a motion and a second. You can call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have Euclid Corridor, 2020-029. This is the RP Apartments. This is 1865 East 93rd Street. I need to swear in, I think Brandon and Richard, are you both here?
Richard's not. He had the wrong.
That's fine, just Brandon. So, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this hearing, or you'll answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, this was approved with conditions, and this is here for conceptual approval. So, you can move pretty quickly, get to the issues, and we'll move forward from here.
So, quickly, this is actually one block over from the site you guys just saw along 90th. This is on 93rd. Another next slide. Some contextual photos of the site, heading from Chester down the street towards our site. Obviously, you go from the Cleveland Clinic Institutional approach and the proximity of Enova. And then walking down this street, which is a lot more residential feel, has those beautiful tree lawn trees and developed trees, as you see in photo number 2, looking back towards Chester. But coming up from Chester to the north, you'll see two sets of three-story or four-story brick masonry apartment buildings, and then two unique houses, one of which, if you go to the next slide. In photo number 3, you see the two adjacent structures. One is a, I believe it's a HUD, Affordable Housing, that has a V restriction on it and can't be torn down or done anything with. But the one to the left is obviously a unique home onto the street. There's a lot of very unique, you know, homes. But even though they're single-family, they are kind of in that three-to-three-and-a-half-story height because of their ridge lines and hoops, et cetera, to them. One of the elements, House Number 1 that you're seeing here in photo number 1 is just slightly above north of our site. But we felt that that beautiful Victorian house is a newer house, very well up kept for the street. And then also across the street, Home Number 2, you know, is what, obviously, the hope, the move and the development of this street continues to kind of renovate and modify these homes into that character. And then obviously, you have the more commercialized apartment building with Enova. Excellent. So, looking at the site plan, we have four parcels of land. One is a Cleveland Land Bank parcel. The other three are controlled or have an option. One has an option to buy, two are controlled by our client, RP, Dr. Arstein. The proposed structure is a four-story, 42-unit apartment building with two 12-foot one-way lane access drives flanking the building. And key to this building is obviously maintaining that 30-foot setback in front edge that aligns with the housing adjacents to in front, so we can create that nice tree lawn experience. We've worked with planning to work on a walk-up unit, so again, it's not that commercial front that, you know, you have the ability to walk from sidewalk up to the building into your unit correctly. Next slide. Next slide. There is a development to the rear of the site that has been proposed, but seems it's hit some, it hasn't been moving forward as quickly as I think some do. It would be hopeful for us that after the building of this would be Phase 1, there could be the potential of building Phase 2, which would be three additional buildings ranging in sizes between 38 to 42 units to connect into it. That's what we're here for. Next slide. Again, four-story units. Every unit has a balcony on the corner units. There's a wraparound condition, so again, really nice space for each unit. Next slide. The elevations of that building, obviously, four-story structure, we want to make sure we had the ability of movement in the building to, you know, create a sense of scale and not have it be a dominating structure on that street. Next slide. Here's a rendering looking south from the north side of our site. One of the elements that was talked about during Design Review, and it actually wasn't necessarily 100% agreed by the committee. They want us to just take a look at the yellow. They feel that the use of the color to break up the thought is extremely important, but they're not sure that the yellow is the right color. Maybe it might be another color in that same location that would make sense. And we were pulling off of that beautiful yellow Victorian home that we felt, you know, was a beautiful piece on the street. We'll take a look at that study to see what that ends up wanting to be. Next slide. Here's a view looking from the north, or looking north from the south. And obviously, in the lower corner, you see the entrance, the apartment building off of the street. Next slide. And then the materiality of the project. There's all the inspects and all the recesses in the building facade. There's a Mac architectural metals. It's a faux wood veneer with some various other metals, again, the charcoal, the pale yellow, and the white framing those balconies. And then integral color CCMU masonry at the bottom, but broken up, so it's not just a complete grounding band, if you will. Small maple canopy, railings, and glazing. That's it.
Okay, thank you, commission members. There was the comment from Design Review, which I agree with, is that maybe before you come back, you really take another look at the color scheme a little bit. So, are you open to that?
Yeah, they love the color scheme, except for the yellow. And again, it was split. Some of the committee felt that it was, it needs a vibrant color because that's what these homes and streets have. You know, they're not, they have some unique colors and aspects, but they weren't sure if yellow was the right version. So, they didn't oppose the wood and the grays and the white. It was a matter of figuring out what the right color would be for that yellow, if it is or if it isn't. And we said we'd absolutely take a look at that and come back with that.
Okay, I appreciate your attempt to break it down in scale and break up the facade. I think it's worked really well. I'm going to move to approve with comments from Lilian and Design Review.
I'll second, but Charles's hand is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see him.
It was never lowered. My bad.
Oh, okay. I'll second. Downing.
I think we lost Lilian.
I think you're right.
Her name's there, but
I think she's having connectivity problems.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to vote yes. I have to go get my lunch, which is out at the front door. I have meetings all day, unfortunately.
Can we call the roll? Or no?
I can call the roll. We have a yes from Commissioner Flucker.
Second, Paul.
There was a motion. Yes.
Curry's not here, I'll say not present. Paul?
Yes.
Slife?
Yes.
Okay, so that will pass.
Thank you.
Charles, if
That's what I was about to say.
Take over again, just so we can keep moving, because I've got another meeting coming up, too. We still have a forum, so.
Yeah, so why don't we move ahead down? I believe we're now into Downtown Flats Design Review District. Item 202018, the Cleveland Cavaliers banner, seeking final approval. With the project representative as Mr. Johnson, are there any others that are going to be speaking to this? Because I believe we'll have to swear everyone in.
Mike had to run to another opportunity. This is Wayne Boyce, and I'll be speaking on his behalf.
Okay, so I'm going to do my best to swear you in, because this is my first time doing it, so someone correct me if I'm getting it wrong. But if you could please raise your right hand, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Yes, I believe that was, we're going to go without being the exact wording of what the oath is. So, with that, go ahead and give us your presentation, and we'll follow up with questions afterwards.
Well, due to time, let's just look to the next slide, if you would. If you look on the left-hand side, what we're trying to do is present a new clean look for the city of Cleveland. So, we come up with a "For the Love for the Land" to replace the old "All for the Land" banner. So, that's all we're trying to do. We're going to go with the same specs we've always used and we developed on this. So, we're just asking for permission to go ahead and change out this banner. It'll be done with a mesh material as specified in the engineer's requirements back in 2005. So, if you look at that, that's all we're asking to do is to be able to get that up. And first year, we want to have that, you know, the media's gotten a hold of this. The positivity on this has been phenomenal, the cities behind it, and you can see this is for the city and unity, so that's all we're asking for.
Thank you, and clearly from the design, I hear there's a diversity statement. I'm sorry, was there someone else coming in to comment on the project?
No.
Okay, I can see from it that, you know, there's a clear diversity statement that's being made here, and that's a really great, you know, sign of for the community. Are there comments from other members of the commission or the councilmen?
No, I agree, Councilman. This is a great design, very representative. Good to see.
I move approval. Downing.
I'll second. Paul?
A motion of second. I'm back. So, anyway, so I lost connectivity. Call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Right, we have one that were left that was at the beginning. Maurice, do you remember what page it was on?
Which one do you want to go to?
Are they, or just one, I thought only one person arrived?
The OKO?
Yeah. No, the
OKO for Greg Saltus on, in Detroit?
Yes.
That is on page 3, item number 2 under Far West.
Then I believe we still have the VOKON piece, right, on Superior?
We still have this VOKON piece, yes.
Okay.
Which do you want to take, Madam Chair?
Well, the VOKON one, we should take, it's in order and they've been waiting, so let's do that one first. So, 2160 Superior Building. I need to swear in, Julie and Chris, if you're both speaking, are you?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer the penalty of perjury?
Hi.
Okay.
I do.
We also have John Penny also here to represent the owner. I don't know.
Yes, if he's speaking, can he give us an eye, too? Anyone speaking?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, well, I will begin. Thank you for having us today. It's been a long agenda, so we will try to keep this brief. My name is Julie Trot from VOKON. I'm here with Chris Rude, also from VOKON, and John Penny, representing Superior JV and Cross Country Mortgage. We may have two additional, yes, we also have Alex Reagan and Joe Plasek on the phone from Cross Country Mortgage. We're very excited to present this to you today. The project is located in the Superior Arts District between Superior Avenue and Payne Avenue. The Cross Country Mortgage is proposing this to relocate their headquarters from Brexville to this location. With that, I will hand it over to John Penny to make a few words, and then we'll tell you about the design.
Yeah, so, good afternoon, everybody. I'll be very brief. I know there's still items on the agenda, but on behalf of Superior JV, the development partner, Cross Country Mortgage, my law firm, Corman, Jackson, and Krantz, and the CCM team who are on the call as well, who've been working on this for three years. We just want to say a couple of words of thanks. It's been a long process. It's a sizable project. First, we want to thank the mayor's office, especially the Economic Development Department. Director Eversol's been terrific to work with. And Councilman Jones, his support has been great. We're available to answer any questions. Like I said, it's been three years. It's a substantial project for this district. It represents a substantial increase in the number of jobs in the area and put a lot of time and effort into it. And just want to say our thanks, and we're available to answer any questions that the commission may have. Thank you.
To keep it brief, we'll just jump right into the design. Chris, why don't you take us through the design?
Sure, absolutely. Slide shows the location between Superior Avenue to the north, Payne Avenue to the south, located in between East 22nd and East 21st. Next slide. The scope of the project includes the corner building of 2160 Superior to the northeast, 2140 Superior adjacent to that, the annex and warehouse to the south of that. There is one building. It's called the Converting Addition that is not in the historic boundaries that will be demolished. Next slide. These are a couple of views of the existing conditions along East 22nd Street. In addition to our onsite parking, we are adding additional parking east of East 22nd. The house that you see in the top will remain, and there will be parking to the north and south of that. Next slide. This is looking north, same perspective, showing the south and the north parking and the current conditions there. Next slide. This is a existing slash demolition site plan. Again, you can see the converting building to be demolished and some internal demolition. The project basically involves repurposing 2160, 2140 Annex and Warehouse to Office, Training, and Call Center. Next slide. With the proposed site plan, one of the things you'll notice is that the parking area has been expanded, but we have also added landscaped islands into that parking. We have a total of 421 spaces that we're providing both onsite and offsite east of East 22nd. One of the recommendations that we received that we are implementing, that you'll see on the landscape plan, is to create landscape buffer along 21st, along Payne, and then also on the east side of East 22nd. You can also see the decorative fencing we are proposing, and the lighting, and the repurposing of the signage to the south of the warehouse. There's an existing monument sign there that would be repurposed. Signage will be subsequently submitted in a separate package. Next slide. Signage will be subsequently submitted in a separate package. Next slide. This is a floor plan just showing the typical layout of the repurposing of of the buildings. One of the things to note over in twenty-one forty to the lower left-hand corner is we are proposing a new skylight into that building in the training area to introduce light. Next slide. In looking at the landscape plan, this this gives a little bit better indication of the planting sizes and what we are trying to do to create a more pedestrian-friendly environment along the along East Twenty-second, along Payne and Twenty-first as well. And there there's a variety of plantings that are being implemented here, combination of of trees and shrubbery. Next slide. In this, in this slide, you can see the variation. We've been working with DeRue as our landscape architect. And you can see the combination of trees and shrubs that we are using. And we are using essentially species that will create pop and 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 contrast to the building. Next slide. This shows the existing conditions of the windows on twenty-one sixty. Uh, I will note that the windows that are currently in this building are not historic in nature in terms in terms of what was originally there. So in working with our historic consultant, we are putting in windows that that essentially bring it back to the historic character. Next slide. This orthogonal elevations illustrating the 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 current inconsistency in the existing window types across the facades on twenty-one sixty. Next slide. These are east and north elevations of what we are proposing to bring back historic windows and in industrial type window with hoppers. Uh, these will be both either operable or inoperable depending on the owner's request. Uh, our historic consultant has indicated that as long as they meet that character, that they will be appropriate. Next slide. And then again, the west and south elevations. Same thing. Next slide. This is a rendering showing what the windows will look like and and what the what the proposed, what the building will look like with a combination of the new windows and a cleaning of the brick. Next slide. This shows the existing conditions of the warehouse that exists to the south of twenty-one sixty. We are maintaining this and it it's being repurposed. Next slide. As you can see, uh, all the windows will be replaced along the east elevation. In addition to this, we are creating a new secondary employee entrance that happens off of Twenty-second. This is directly across from the offsite parking that was shown previously. So next slide. In addition to that, there are no windows currently on the west elevation of either the of of the annex or the warehouse. So we are proposing new windows to allow further light in in addition to having a primary employee entrance at the annex where the converting addition is being demolished. Next slide. This shows the different types of lighting that are being used on the project, all LED. LED sightlights in the parking areas, uh, LED wall packs. And in addition to that, uh, LED up-down lighting that will be used along the facades of twenty-one sixty and the warehouse as well. Next slide. Uh, simple site photometric plan showing showing how that light will throw on the site. Next slide. And then lighting locations. You can see that there's a combination of wall packs being used. One of the things uh, historic our historic consultant asked in our pursuit of historic tax credits is that these fixtures be as unassuming as possible and sort of blend in with the facade and also for their color to match. So the color of these fixtures will match the the brick. In addition to that, on the lower right, you can see that we, the skylight that we are proposing. Next slide. And again, to maintain lighting along the sidewalk on Twenty-second, we are also introducing those accent lights along the facade Twenty-second for the warehouse. Next slide. And then for our new entry, we also have accent lights shown there. Next slide. These are simple accents that show that our new RTUs, our rooftop units for HVAC will not be visible from the street. We have positioned them that way in accordance with our historic consultant's recommendations. Next slide. Again, this is, this is a simple detail of the windows and the existing conditions versus what is there versus what we are putting in. Um, you have your your hopper configuration, uh, your intermediate buttons that would that would probably be exterior. We're still working with uh, our window consultant on that. Uh, historic has also recommended that these windows, the window mulleons and intermediates and hoppers be black.
We did appear in front of uh, the downtown flats design review committee yesterday. We received full approval with the following conditions. They asked us to, um, Maurice, if you don't mind going back to the uh, landscape plan, probably eight back. Um, two more. Right there. Perfect. They they did ask um, for uh, screening for the generator uh, to be added to the project. Um, a more of a physical versus just landscaping. They asked us for consideration for additional outdoor space for the employees, either ground level and the rooftop. They asked us to study the stormwater runoff more. Um, we are repurposing three parking lots, um, the main parking field plus the two on page north, which are on the east side of East Twenty-second Street. They asked us to study that more. Um, and then the final one was some additional um, landscape buffering on the northeast parking lot um, on uh, East Twenty-second Street. So that would be the top of the page, uh, fairly central to this um, in the site plan that you're reviewing. We do need to review this a little bit more with the owner because parking is a um, asset to this and um, really required for this project. As Chris mentioned, we have four hundred, I believe. Uh, Chris was the final count, four hundred and eleven?
We're currently at four twenty-one. Uh, the reconfiguration of that of the northeast parking across from Twenty-second uh, will reduce that probably by about probably about five or six spaces. Um, so we're still working out. We're trying to get the parking that's appropriate for the headquarters while still being cognizant of landscaping, circulation and screening.
So we do need to study that because parking is a premium. They eventually um, could have up to seven hundred and fifty people within this uh, location. You know, we do meet all the zoning requirements. They are um, you know, working towards the goal for reduced parking based on being the city location, but you know, parking is still essential. So we do need to study that one and would request to be able to come back and coordinate that with staff.
Thank you. Um, commission members, any questions? Um, I do think that these items, if this is approved, can go to staff. I don't think you need to come back here since you're here for final approval. Um, so um, really any um, additional questions or comments from the commission members?
I move approval, uh, incorporating the uh, concerns expressed by Design Review.
And are you going back to staff?
Working it out with staff.
Okay, so motion is to approve, final approval with the details, just to be confirmed with the staff. You don't need to come back here uh, unless there's an issue. And we have a second. And um, before we vote, I'd like to say that this is an exceptional project. What an incredible anchor for this district to bring all these jobs, to renovate this building and to do the kind of the way you're looking at the whole block. So congratulations and thank you. And this is a really critical and important project for the city of Cleveland. So really appreciate it. Sorry that you had to wait the whole meeting. So with that, let's take the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Congratulations. Can't wait to see this project.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, everyone.
We have one that we're going back to the last, which is uh, the number two on the agenda, which was O K O Homes Detroit Shoreway. Um, and this is Rachel, this is here to speak to this. Can I swear you in really fast?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, let's go. You're last. We gotta move pretty fast.
Will take like two minutes.
Okay.
So um, you've all seen this project before. Um, really what's changing about this project is that we're going from nine units to seven. There are still three single-family homes up on West Fifty-seventh Street with townhouse units in the back on West Fifty-eighth Place. Um, what has changed besides the fact that the houses, there there are fewer units, um, and that's to accommodate all two-car garages. Should everybody choose a two-car garage, if someone wants a one-and-a-half car garage, they could still get one. Um, but these two units, uh, units for parcel four and parcel five that you see there were originally oriented towards side avenue. Their fronts were on side avenue. They've been rotated so that they face the green space, which would be the center of the little community. Um, and then uh, there's more space in the back because we removed a unit. There were some recommendations made by the Design Review Committee, which I'm going to be looking at uh, when I come back to them and then come back to you to get rid of the drive that connects to West Fifty-eighth Place and make more use or more room for parcels four, five, six and seven, and potentially rotate six and seven, so they're not facing the backyard of the unit in front. Um, and just real quickly, next slide. If um, we can skip to this and just get to the elevation. So next slide. So this is, these are the units that will be facing the street. They're in keeping with the nature of the existing houses on West Fifty-eighth Street. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. That was a rendering that we had done. There'll be three instead of four. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. And then this is the concept for the townhouses, which will be in the back. So the front units are very single-family house-like to match what's on the street, to be good neighbors. They have full-on eight-foot deep front porches. The townhouses in the back have rooftop decks um, that as their kind of outdoor public space. And I I think that's sufficient for you all to get the idea of where we are at current.
And we're just doing conceptual approval and if um, this kind of, you're gonna reduce the number, the you've made a reduction in terms of the number of units, but it's it's conceptual approval and you'll come back with both these revisions and the removal of the road as well, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I move approval. Downing.
Uh, we have a motion and a second.
Second, Paul.
Okay, two seconds, which is great. Um, can we have a call for the roll?
Downing. Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yep.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Um, motion carries. Uh, thank you and um, thank you for the the revisions to this from the I think the feedback from the community. Um, do we need to table the last one that's not here? Um, and before we adjourn.
That was Old Glorious Church.
Can I have a motion to table? It's uh, two zero two zero dash zero four four.
I so move Downing to table.
Second, Flucker.
Uh, can you call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Yes.
Curry.
Yep.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
All right. Thank you, guys. Sorry it went so long, but it's a good sign. If at the end of the year, we have this much development going on in the city, so um, hopefully this is a good sign for twenty twenty-one and um, sorry for everyone for such a difficult year. And I hope everyone has a great holiday. And I hope to see everyone in person. I miss everybody.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Meeting adjourned. Bye.